We'll call to order the full city council meeting for April 4th, 2023. The clerk will call the roll for attendance.
Anderson Burgos?
Here.
Bartley? Gibner?
Here.
Jordan?
Here.
Walden Adalvez?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
McGivern?
Here.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Here.
Guello?
Here.
Israel Rivera?
Here.
Jenny Rivera?
Here.
Tomlin?
Here.
Bacon?
Please stand for pledge allegiance.
God bless America.
And the city of Hoyok.
And the city council.
Amen.
Before we get started, councillor Bartley's name was polled first for voting. Also-
He's on his way.
Yep, so also, since we have people online for open meeting law purposes, motion to take roll call votes that for purposes of this meeting would be to all motion to remove items from the table, place items on the table, open public hearing, package items, suspend rules unless there is some objection.
So move them, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Also, I'm going to ask for a moment of silence, but I will actually read the communication because I think Alicia Zoller captured it perfectly. Unfortunately, the city of Hoyok lost a very dear friend to the city as well as an employee. Jennifer Martins, the OCD compliance officer, passed away after a valiant battle with cancer. The city has lost one of its finest public servants. Jen served the people of Hoyok for exactly 29 years. She was smart, kind, and funny. She learned her way from executive secretary to compliance manager, ensuring that the city's expertly managed all the federal grants. She took enormous pride in the work that she did, and we refer to her as Princess Persnickety. Hopefully, I'm saying that right, Alicia. Jennifer was incredibly kind to all. In December, as her own cancer grew worse, she noticed a young man outside the office and kept an eye on him for weeks, gathering supplies, ensuring that he knew about his available services. She was the coworker who remembered that if your mom had been sick and offered support. She never met a stranger. She had the ability to put anyone she met at ease, a skill she used over and over at work. Being a public servant in these times can be challenging, but she took great pride and honor in her work, serving the community to meet the people's basic needs of housing, food, park, healthcare, education, and safety. She loved Hoyok. She truly believed in demonstrating the public service matters. Thank you to everyone who supported her over the 14 months. She came in every day, every day, even though it grew worse each day because she loved Room 400. It was her place that she knew she'd be surrounded by love and comfort. Today, as always, be a little kind. Be like Jennifer. Be kind, work hard, love your community, care for the people around you, and always smile. As she said, believe that today will be a great day. The arrangements will be Thursday, 2 to 4, and 6 to 8 at Berry J. I just asked for a moment of silence for Jennifer. Thank you. With that, we have laid on the table, we have items one. Any response for item one?
Mr. President, if we can suspend rules and take up item one and item nine as a package?
Second.
Suspend the rules, take up one and nine as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? One is a petition for a zone change, application BG to BH for 2203 North Hampton Street. And then nine is a communication from legal department, emails regarding Kmart Plaza. So with that, councillor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the bottom line here is that the applicant is not the owner of the property, and the owner of the property has no interest in seeking a zone change at this time. So the request is to send it back to the clerk to return to the applicant.
My motion is to take it, send it back to a clerk. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Item two. Any action on that one?
Mr. President, if we can take up item two, suspend rules, and take it up with item eight, please, as a package?
And item three off the table for discussion.
And item three?
Second.
Motion is to take up two, eight, and three as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Two is the committee on finances referred, nor that our city solicitor draft a ballot question for the next election for voters to decide on the CPA tax, which will reduce it from 1.5% to 0.5%. Three is the committee on finances referred and ordered that we invite in the CPA board members to update on the program. And eight is the actual ballot question. Shall the city of Hoyok amend the current CPA tax to establish in accordance with provisions of Section 3 of Chapter 44B of Mass General Law permissible under Section 16, Chapter 44B from 1.5, and this says 1.0, so that should be, that looks like a mistake.
Mr. President, as a point of clarification?
Yep.
Out of committee, the recommendation was a compromise recommendation to the 1%, so that's what's crafted into the question.
All right, I was just reading, I was reading two and then that. Okay, so with that, councillor Bacon?
Yes.
Councillor Bacon, then councillor McGivern. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I appreciate getting this legal language, and I hope that my colleagues will vote to give the voters the right to weigh in on this, as we are their representatives. And so I'm hoping that we will just take a simple vote and move it forward. Thank you.
Councillor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee on finance, as I think we know, just to recap, did meet on the request to put this ballot question on the ballot. Item three was part of our study. We invited the CPA board members, came in, more important, the chairperson, who gave us an update on a program that's been doing incredible. The update wasn't just about the projects that have been passed, several that are coming out this evening, but about the impact of how the percentage works. The 1.5 is not the high percentage that's allowed by Mass General Law. The high percentage would be 3.0, which a handful of communities, we learned, a handful of communities across the state have adopted and do use. We, the voters of the city of Hoyok, agreed to the 1.5. We've been doing that for close to five, five years now, and I think it's important that the way that money has been used, because it's coupled with money that comes from the registry of deeds, as designed by state law, we get a certain portion, piece of a pie of money that's generated through fees when people use the register of deeds itself. The committee asked the law department to put the language, and I think the law department did a pretty good job of keeping a simple question. Yes or no questions are never completely simple when it means you're governing by ballot because there's always more to a yes or a no. But the law department, at the request of the committee, did draft this language. I think the language states that the way, the maker of the order, the way the committee amended it to the 1%, and it's quite clear, giving the voters the choice, if they so choose, to reduce the 1.5 to 1%. It also has a summary, which explains each, what a yes vote is, what a no vote is, which is important. And we certainly welcome, not our job, but we certainly welcome proponents and opponents of this question between now and November to offer their positions on this. It's, you know, important to understand that it was the voters who gave us the city the right to use CPA money, and it was the, it's the voters that, you know, I think rightfully have a chance to take a look at the option of reducing it if they so choose, or keeping it in place. The one thing we learned from Megan McGrath outside of the projects and stuff was the administrative cost is part of the formula for CPA, and she just, you know, is a little concerned that, you know, too much of a reduction would knock out the administrative cost, which would not allow the CPA to, you know, to pay for a staff person, I believe it's a part-time person, but a staff person that works with them closely. But the committee did their job, the law department did their job, and I agree with councillor Bacon. It's time now to take our vote to decide if we're going to put this on the ballot.
Councillor Gibner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was trying to look up some information on exact dates that I didn't find, but I am under the impression that this has been in front of the public. It was voted, you know, the CPA tax was voted in as something to benefit the city, and then twice now, it has, this similar question has been put on the ballot to see if we could reduce the CPA fund percentage. So I just wonder if this is not, like, doing a lot of work for something that's unnecessary. You know, I see these funds are needed for projects, and, you know, we want everything to get done, but we don't really like paying for it. So this is a great way to continue paying for things that need to be done in the city. Thanks.
Councillor Anderson Burgos?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I will not be voting for this to go on this election, and it's not because I disagree. I feel that if, if something of this magnitude, if you're going to be presenting it to the voters, then we should really be waiting for a larger voter turnout. And we all know that this, this year is not going to, we're not going to have that turnout. I mean, look at, when we got this passed, look at the turnout back then and how many people were in favor of it. So I only feel that it's right. If we're going to do this, then let's do it next election, next year. That would make more sense. I don't know why we're trying to rush this through now at this point. That's just my, my take.
Councillor Rivera.
I have a question with regards to the question, and I guess for what, the way I'm reading it is, if you vote yes, then it means that you're voting for the decrease, right? For the election, the last time around, if you voted yes, was it in favor of the CPA project? Yes. So that's kind of different this time. Yeah. So that's kind of confusing for me. That's the one piece, right? And then the other piece now, I'm also not going to vote in favor of it. I understand that last go-around, it was the body left it up to the people, but the people also elected me to, to kind of like make these decisions sometimes. So for this situation, I will not be voting for it. It's not that I don't agree that taxes are going up and that things are getting expensive, but I actually value a lot of what is going on throughout the community in regards to CPA, and a lot of the people that voted for me actually value it too, and they have asked me to not vote in favor for this. So ultimately, I am doing the will of the people and not voting in favor for this. And I urge some of you that have heard the same to do the same thing. That's all I would say. Thank you.
Councillor McGivern, you-
No, I just, I doubt it was a question to the, to the finance committee, but I think councillor Rivera makes a very good point. It's not as simple as what the language was the first time, and that's why I've always said, I don't like referendum questions. I agree that, I think we're put here to make decisions because most issues don't have two sides of a story. Most issues have three or multiple sides of a story that need to be vetted out before you make a yes or no question. But I do agree that voters have a right to a choice. It was the voters that put this here. But it is the exact opposite. You know, when we originally, and we didn't have to put a ballot question on, the petition could have been circulated, and X amount of signatures could have put that question on the ballot. But we agreed, you know, after a lot of encouragement, to put the original question on, and it was, are you in favor of CPA or are you against it? And it did have the percentage, but other than that, it was totally different.
Councillor Bacon was next.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just would like to clarify a couple of things. If this is voted to be put on the ballot, this would be only the second time any question about CPA appears on the ballot. It has not been asked of the voters since the first vote. And I would like to reiterate that, a point that has been made before. Because the city council took the vote to put it on the ballot in the first place, rather than letting citizens, if they wish to implement it, present a petition, means that the only way the voters have an opportunity to weigh in at all is if the city council will give the voters an opportunity to vote. And that is because the city council made the decision to put it on the ballot initially. And the way the CPA is set up, the question has to be placed on the ballot the same way that it was initiated in whatever community it occurred in. And while some people were in favor of it and others were not, I think the vote was within a 10-point margin. It was not an overwhelmingly endorsed change by the voters, and there have been a lot of economic changes in a challenging direction for our communities since then. And I think it's only right to give the voters their given right to vote. They don't put us in office to substitute for their judgment. They put us in office to represent them. And so I really hope that my colleagues will honor that and put this on the ballot. Thank you.
Councillor Murphy Rumbelletti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief. I, I think I would be feeling differently if we were approached via a petition by the voters. I am an at-large councillor. I represent the entire community, and I have not once been really pushed towards decreasing the CPA. I think there's ways that we can improve the way that we're doing CPA, but I do not think the answer is to decrease. And I just feel like it, while I agree that the economic conditions have been challenging, this, this particular ballot question feels, as several councillors have said already, very different from the first ballot question. I worry that, you know, the, the, and the way that we're going about this is not the best. So, you know, I understand that it's the will of the people, but the only, I get a lot of emails, and the only emails about CPA that I'm getting, or the most of the emails, if, you know, I can look back, but they're advocating for the program and talking about the great things that are being done. That's not to say that I want to get in the way of the will of the voters, but I do feel like it's a large undertaking. When I started as a city councillor, I wanted to put a bunch of things on the ballot, and then I took a step back and realized that, you know, maybe there's, there's other ways to do this. So those are just my thoughts this evening. I'm not inclined to vote for this tonight, but I appreciate the conversation and look forward to talking about it more.
Councillor Rivera.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd just like to reiterate that the question is kind of not the same, because before it was a yes and now it's a no, and that will confuse the voters this time around, especially when the campaign would say yes to CPA along the last time we did it. But the other piece to me is, it's not about taking the will of the voters away, because in a sense, first of all, the council that came up with that decision, I was not on that council. That's the first piece, right? The second piece is, is that people are voting us in and expecting us sometimes to put our two feet down and stand our ground in certain situations and certain circumstances. And I keep getting emails that this is one of the ones that I should kind of dig my heels in and actually advocate for what the people are asking for, and this is what the people are asking me for overall. And it may be different for you, for another councillor, but for me, this is what I'm being asked to do from the people that have voted for me, and this is something that I'm gonna, this is the decision I'm going to make. I'm not going to vote for it. I'm sorry if people are offended by it, but at the end of the day, it's not about that. It's about serving my constituents that reached out to me. And yes, thank you. That'll be all.
Councillor Tomlin.
Yes, in 2016, we let the, we put this on the ballot, and the council did vote on that. And I think it's important that we look at that, that vote that we took to put this on the ballot, the council to vote on this. I don't believe that we should wait another, another two years. I understand that every election's different. There's no way our race, but I think it's important that, you know, the citizens get to vote on this, this term. And this, this is an important, very important vote, and there has been some people that have been struggling over the last few years, you know, money-wise. And it's, it's something that I think the voters are intelligent. I think, you know, last time you said it could be confusing, but when people go in to vote, they know who they're going to vote for. They read the ballot question. They understand the ballot question. I don't think this is going to be any difficult for anybody to see that. I'm very much in favor of all the projects that the CPA has done over the years. I think it's important that we could keep it at that, 1.5%, but the voters should decide on this, and I am, as one of the at-large councillors, I am one that did vote to put this on the ballot in 2016, and I will again vote to put this on the ballot this, this year. Thank you.
Councillor Bartley.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. Sorry, I was a few minutes late. I apologize.
By the way, you are first in the voting, just-
Oh, yeah. Well, I deserve it for being late.
That's a penalty.
Yeah. I'm glad I broke Tomlin's streak. Mr. Tomlin's streak, my good friend Pete. Just a couple of things for the record. Thanks to the law department, I thought the summary really came out well, so I think they deserve a little bit of credit. I'm glad councillor Bacon corrected the record. This, when there's a misstatement like that, that's got to be corrected. This is the only time, besides the first time, it's been on the ballot. There's not been a time prior in between. There was a first time. You've heard many speakers say about a petition, wow, we should do, well, we could have done that last time, and it was a committee that I chaired, and we thought it was the fairest way to do it. Let the voters have a chance to speak at the ballot box. Why do we have to torture them with getting several multi-thousand signatures on a petition and inundate the clerk's office with this? That was a tough vote, but we took the vote. The last time, Mr. President, it was a straightforward vote, yes or no. I'm not sure why this is confusing. This is a straightforward vote. It's yes or no. Pretty simple. I think moving the ballot question to an off municipal year, like next year, makes zero sense whatsoever. This is a municipal question. To consider putting it on a state/federal ballot? Makes no sense. And then thinking you're going to change the election results because in your mind, you're going to get a higher turnout, there's no evidence to that whatsoever. I don't know what tomorrow holds, never mind two years or a year from now, what the ballot's going to look like. The last point I want to make is, if you recall, Mr. President, the order was for 0.5%. When I was in finance committee meeting that night, as a non-member, I suggested to the committee, why don't you have a compromise? And it was readily accepted by the whole committee, well, at least four of the members anyhow, to change it from 5.05 to 1. The maker of the order maybe didn't like it, maybe did like it. I'm appreci-, you know, obviously, the maker of the order had a 0.5, but it was a compromise. That's what this is about. A lot of it's, in politics, it's the art of the possible. I'm hopeful that we're going to, you know, we hear a lot of rhetoric in this room. I'm for the people. I want the people, this is a chance to allow the voters to speak on a highly important issue, their taxes. Doesn't happen that often. We may have another vote down the road relative to middle school financing. Whether that goes before the voters or just his body on a bond, that's an open question. I, for one, would rather hear from the voters. If you don't want to support the question, Mr. President, you have a chance to vote no at the ballot box, but you should at least give the voters some respect, like we did five years ago. We put it on the ballot. We heard from the voters. I voted no five years ago. I voted against it. I lost. Oh, well, so now I'm paying my taxes. I think it's only fair for us to do the same in the same format as we did last time. Thank you.
Councillor Bacon has her hand up. This would be the third time. Motion to suspend rules, allow her to speak. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Councillor Bacon.
Thank you. I just want to make a brief reminder point. A councillor mentioned that if the citizens wanted to change it, they could file a petition, but because the city council is the body that voted to put it on the ballot, the only way it can go back on the ballot is by the city council. A citizen's petition would not be accepted at this point in time because of the process we chose five years ago. Thank you. So this is the only vehicle for people to be able to vote. Thank you.
Councillor Gibner? And then councillor Jordan? Yeah, we'll, we'll ask you, don't worry. Councillor Gibner first.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to mention that statistics do show that more people come out to vote when it's a state election, so. So if we really want to hear what the voters think, all the voters who wouldn't normally come out and who really, if we really want to get as much input as possible, we will put this on the ballot in two years. I'm not against giving voters the choice. I would also like to mention that having respect for voters would also be making sure that as many of them are heard as possible. So we do know that the numbers don't lie, and this next election just won't turn out the vote the way it will in two years from now, so I think that is important to keep in mind if we really want to hear from our city. Also, I haven't had any constituents ask me about this at all. I've also only heard compliments to what the CPA is doing, and people like the changes they see and all the things coming down the pipeline, so I think it's important to respect that and let voters decide when they are all coming out to vote. Thanks.
Councillor Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to emphasize a couple of the points that were earlier made by a few of the other councillors. You know, whatever it was now, five years or so ago, I voted to put this on the ballot, and I took a lot of heat for that because there were a number of people who were very concerned about another tax. But I voted to put it on the ballot because who am I to stand in the way of the voters to have their say about this? And as it turns out, I think I obviously made the right decision because a majority of the citizens ended up wanting it. So that wouldn't have been fair if I didn't vote to put it on the ballot and then stood in the way of a majority of the citizens from being allowed to create the CPA tax. So that was the right decision then, and for the same reasons that I voted to put that on the ballot then, it'll be the same reason I'm putting, I would vote to put this on the ballot today. This is their government, not our government, their government. And we serve here vicariously in their place. Not that we should, as appropriately pointed out, you know, we should do everything by ballot question, down to the minutia, but big things like this, which are a major tax that hits everybody's wallet, especially in these financially difficult times, they should have the right to say how much they're paying in taxes. And as far as what election goes, you know, these are going to, this is the same election that's going to be picking us, okay? If the, if the, if this is a good enough election to pick who's on the school committee and the city council, it sure is good enough to pick what the CPA tax. I mean, think about the logic of that statement, all right? As far as the confusion, again, I'll come back to, it's yes or no. The voters are very smart people. I have complete faith in them, as I always do, and it is their decision that we all rely on every November- And uh it is their decision that uh we all rely on every November. Uh and that has never steered us wrong in the past, and I would suggest it wouldn't steer us wrong again this November. That's why, again, let the people vote, and that's why I would vote to put it on the ballot. And uh there's good arguments for and against it, and let the people uh make their arguments and let the people decide. That's, that's what's best in our democracy. Thank you.
Counselor Maldonado Velez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um so to, regardless of how the vote ends up tonight, I am, it's campaign season. We're here, we're doing this damn thing. Um with that said, you know, two points. One, I believe it was put in the twenty sixteen election, the first time the CPA came up. Twenty sixteen was the, one of the biggest presidential elections in our, in modern American history. So to Juan's point, like that's, I'm gonna have to agree with that. I know I was sort of against your point last time in the finance meeting, but now I'm seeing it. Like if we are talking about putting this ballot in the same way that we put it in last time, then yes, it would make sense to put it at a time when there's more voter turnout. I mean, back then, there were eight thousand voters that voted yes. I think in the last year, we had eight thousand voters total come out. So eight thousand voters that wanted it, that just doesn't make sense. So I'm gonna go with Counselor Anderson Burgos' point on that one. And the second part around Counselor Rivera's um petition. Yes, we may not need a petition to actually put it on the ballot, but I think what I'm hearing, it's, it would be great to have a see a petition that says, hey, we want the CPA. And then we still decide as a council that this is a ballot question that we have. But we haven't, I mean, I know for me, I haven't gotten anyone saying, hey, we need to put this on the C, uh we need to reduce the CPA ba- um tax. The only ones that have said that are the people in this rooms. I've not gotten any emails, I've not gotten any support. It literally has just been like, the CPA has done a great job, has done amazing things. Why, why is this even on the ballot? So with all that said, I I am gonna, you know, I was sort of on defense because going back to my earlier point, election's an election. We're gonna campaign whatever, which way. Um this should hold off. It should be a time when there's more people that are actually into it. And I would love to hear from the people and maybe get an email right now, hey, I want this on the CPA. I I want this on the ballot, and I haven't gotten that at all. Um so for that reason, I'm gonna vote no tonight.
Counselor Rivera, for the third time, motion to suspend the rules, uh or to allow him to speak for a third time. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post Counselor.
Thank you, uh Mr. President. Um I think for me, it's 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 kind of like about consistency, kinda like what Counselor Valderrama Velez mentioned. And he, thank you for highlighting those fun facts, right? Uh two thousand sixteen, eight thousand voters voted yes for it, right? At the end of the day, if 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 we're gonna do something the same way as we said, that we would put it right the way it was the last time, then we should try to do it to the best of our abilities when it comes to that. So um that's the one piece. But then the other thing to me is, I I'm still trying to understand the process, right? Because it sounds like if, so back then, when they took this vote, right? This is this epic vote. When they, when the, when the counselors took the vote, right? If they voted no, would they be able to still sign the petition and then get it on the ballot anyways? Yes or no? It's a question, maybe legal, I guess.
Legal? So motion to suspend the rules, ask the question illegal. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So.
So the question is that if at back then, if the council had vetoed or voted down, voted it down, right? If the the um, the people got the petition and got the thousands of signatures, would it still be ha- have been put on the ballot?
Yeah, um good evening, counselors. Uh the bottom line is, if you voted, if the um people voted no, then that means that the CPA would not have been.
No, 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 the que-, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Cat, cat, um or city solicitor, that um, the question is more about like, so if the council, when they were electing to put it on the ballot, if they had voted no to not put it on the ballot and the people got the petition for it, would it be able to still be put on the ballot?
Um yeah, if this body did not vote to adopt it, then it's not adopted. And the so, um the citizens can do their own citizen's petition and put it on the ballot that way.
So, so is it fair to say that counselors at the time possibly said, might as well vote in favor for it because they're gonna get the signatures and put it on the petition anyways? And it would still get on the ballot, right? Is it fair to say that? So that way, you don't look like, I mean, not for you to answer that question. But I guess for me, in general, just thinking back now to this point where it's like, it kinda makes sense to not go against something that's gonna get the signatures anyways and still be put on the ballot so that you don't look like you're against something that's a larger project. Because for now, for me, the only people that I'm hearing that are against it are the ones that voted it no, except for Kevin. And thank you for voting for it, Kevin, back then, because your voice spoke volumes. Your sp-, your voice speaks volumes from time to time. I don't mean to give you the credit at the end of the day, but sometimes you have to give it when it's due. Um but um getting back to the point, for me, again, it's, there's games being played and gamesmanship is not fair to the people to me. And I'm gonna keep it a hundred every time. So you guys could be mad at me and you guys could make faces, do whatever you wanna do when it comes down to it. I'm gonna get, I'm, I'm gonna keep doing it and I'm gonna keep calling it when I see it. So thank you and you guys have a good night or a good day.
Counselor Anderson Burgos.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you, Counselor Rivera and all the other counselors. I just wanna make a couple of points. Um so make no mistake that what we be have before us is calculated. And let me explain why. First of all, not just myself, but my other colleagues have yet to receive an email or a call from any of the constituents. And I'll remind you, these are at-large counselors here. And myself and Ward Six have not received an email or a call regarding, put the C, remove the CPA, adjust the CPA, anything CPA outside of, wow, I can't believe all of the good things that CPA is doing. I'm really happy that that it's, we're investing into our community, make it better. That's what I see. But what I also I see, when I say that it's calculated, it's an easy opportunity because of the lower voter turnout. It's an easy opportunity for groups like, let's make Holyoke affordable, which I, by the way, know that some counselors belong to this group. Let's make Holyoke affordable to reach out to those constituents who will possibly vote and try to persuade them to vote to remove the CPA or to lower it. So again, this is calculated. Yo no soy mama, oh, okay? So this is calculated and that needs to be addressed.
Anyone further? Counselor McGivern.
I wasn't gonna say anything further, Mr. President. But two thousand sixteen, I voted yes on the ballot question to put it on the ballot. In two thousand sixteen, I voted yes in the ballot box in November to pass CPA because I thought it could do some good. What's happened since two thousand sixteen is far beyond the good. It it's incredible what CPA does. I don't wanna vote yes to chance that we're reducing the monies that go to such so many good projects, but I do believe the option to the voters is legitimate request in that we're not harming the CPA. Because I think the voters are very intelligent and understand that the one point five percent is not a lot of money. But when you add it together with the money from the registry of deeds, it does a lot of good. The one percent is not as bad as it sounds because our assessed values of homes have gone up significantly over the last three years. I don't understand the calculation without due respect to Counselor Anderson Burgos because I'm I'm just voting yes to put it on the ballot tonight so that I have the option as a voter to say no in November. And that's what I will do. And I will, not tonight, but I will gladly speak about why I will say no in November if the appropriate hearings and the appropriate uh um get-togethers are are out there. Because this, these projects, and I think people watched, they're around once or twice a month. I think people watch the CPA meetings, are amazed at the work, the uh seven, nine individuals, I believe, that they do. It's just incredible. And I can't say enough good things about CPA. And I think the average voter out there, when they're, if they don't know of it, when they're reminded or when you talk about it, they agree. But I I'm just, it's a ballot question. I don't like ballot questions, but it's a legitimate ask and that's the only reason I'm voting yes tonight so I can vote no in November.
Um one final point, uh I was one of the counselors who fought for the CPA uh when it came out. I can't believe it was two thousand sixteen. Well, I had more hair back then. Uh but it, you know, back then, that was you're adding a tax, as Counselor Jordan pointed out, which was not favorable. But I knew what the CPA could do. And now we see what it can do. Uh but back then, I did say at the same time, instead of going out and get a petition, the council will take it up and we'll do our job to give the people the right to say what they want. And then I said, at the same time, if they come back, I'll give them that same right. And that's what they're doing now. They're coming back and saying they want to see if they wanna do a shift to it. I said in five years, we'll do it. I didn't realize it had been that long. So for me, it's not about the CPA does this, the CPA does that. I know what the CPA does, does a phenomenal job. It's about giving the people the right to vote, whatever election cycle you wanna point to. I'm gonna stick to my word. When they came to me, I said, I'll go for it, don't get a petition, I'll fight for it, I'll put it on as unfavorable as it was. And I took a beating. They're asking again to have that right to vote, regardless of who they are. They're asking. So I'm gonna give it back to the people, another chance to vote on this. I can honestly say, all the things that have been done, I really don't see it changing. That's just my view. But we'll see. But I will vote tonight to allow the citizens of Hoyoke to have that right again, which is what I gave the first time around.
On the motion?
So the motion is to go forward a ballot question. The clerk will call a roll. Vote yes, you're voting for that.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givern?
No.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
No.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rombleddy?
No.
Polo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
No.
Jenny Rivera?
No.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos? Seven yeas, six knees.
We need seven?
Yep.
Pass. So that, that would pass. So, all right.
First hurdle. Now it needs one more.
Yeah.
Awesome.
With that, we're on to item four. I think that one's still waiting.
Yes.
Okay, so move on to public comment.
Mr. President, for item four, can we actually, I know we did it already, um request from Office of Planning Economic Development to get an update and from Solicitors' Office to update us for the next meeting? Because I have heard that we may not need it on the console side and I heard that we may. So I just wanna have an update from those two offices to.
So on four, can we reach out and get an update?
Thank you.
All right, so to public comment, uh we have a few signed up here. And I'm not sure about online yet, but for here, the first one would be Steve's. I'm, I think I butchered it last time based on the way I'm seeing it written, but seventeen Glen Street. Superb. So just as a reminder, if if you haven't spoken here before, it's a minute and a half. I'll give you a wave around a minute. I give a little extra. And then that gives you at least some time to to do your closing. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Steve. Just full name, address for the record.
Steve Superbo, seventeen Glen Street. For all we know, the report could come back and say that we are a hundred percent perfect or they could come back and we might get some surprises. That was the statement of Mayor Garcia in the early stages of seeking the police risk analysis report. It is a revealing statement demonstrating the information Mayor Garcia was weighing as he considered a path forward. Presumably, the a hundred percent perfect evaluation can be attributed to manager of the police department, but there was also evidence from the other side of the spectrum. And I wanna give credit to Mayor Garcia for evaluating these two positions and doing the right thing. But now I call on him to follow through on the intent for seeking this report, which is rectifying the problems at our police department. The evidence is clear if you read the report. The surprises that the report uncovered reflect neglect and negligence. The report is a scathing account and indictment of the management and leadership of Chief Pratt. I'm asking the mayor to follow through on his original intentions and remove all impediments so that this process, which requires timely and aggressive implementation, can begin. The first and most notable impediment is Chief Pratt. Chief Pratt has given indications that he will not be part of the solution in his closing statement at the Public Safety Committee on March sixth and his summary letter released to be part of the record with the report and most notably in his performance, which is amply chronicled in the report. Chief Pratt has sixteen months left to retirement. Sixteen months is not enough time to take on this labor-intensive proposition, but too much time to allow him to subsist as an impediment and derail this valuable opportunity. Please, Mayor, follow through and proceed with the work to improve the situation at our police department. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Patty Devine.
Thank you, Mr. President. My mother was born in nineteen sixteen without the right to vote before the nineteenth amendment was ratified. Although women have come a long way in their rights as an Ameri-, as Americans, I feel that after last week's, last city council meeting, we still have a long way to go. Today in twenty twenty-three, Holyoke, we have four women on the city council, women department heads in the law department, assessors, personnel, city clerk, tax collector, library, auditor, community development, registrar of voters, and wisteria herds, to name a few. Watching the interrogation of one of the newer attorneys in the solicitor's office, I felt like we were in communist Russia. In this country, we do not conduct interrogations like the one at the last meeting. Show respect by at least letting Attorney Mantaleski and others have a chance to answer questions. I watch the meeting from home and cringe sometimes when I see how department heads and others are treated. I was proud of the integrity and knowledge that Attorney Mantaleski showed as well as the maturity and intellectual responses that counselors Tessa Murphy Rombleddy, Cocaine Givern, and Jenny Rivera showed that night. You certainly held your lo-, your own against the bully in the room. As a former city counselor myself, I know how many hours you put in and appreciate what these three female counselors, as well as the other new members of the council, have accomplished in a short time. Not to take away from the hard work of other counselors, as it says above, makers of law, makers of history. So make some laws and make some positive history. Keep up the good work, stay respectful, and maybe the bullies in the room will learn, will learn from your example.
Next is Richard Purcell.
Hello, Richard Purcell, two seventy-nine Suffolk Street. Um I'm here to talk about ballot questions. Actually, I'm here to talk about items forty-eight and forty-nine. The police commission was voted on twice by the citizens of this city and voted in favor of establishing a police commission in the city. I'm in favor in the, in the nineties, the two thousands, and in twenty twenty-three, I'm in favor of still having a police commission in the city. It'll be an extra tool in the police department. It'll be real community policing as citizens being part of the police commission. It'll help fix the commission. Before, when we had it on the ballot, was because of audits. This time, I want it on the ballot because of audits. Again, we can go on and on and on about how, how good the police department is, but if the audit is saying that something's wrong, then let's let the citizens be part of that, that decision by having a citizen complete commission that hires, fires, promotes, and listens to citizens' complaints. It's, it's just is what democracy is all about. If you go get any department in this city, and every department has a, either a board or a commission governing it, except for one, guess which one?
Add a minute.
The police department. So don't, don't set, you can send it to ordinance, redo it. We've already got archives of when we done it before. So you can just grab the archives and redo it again. And don't send it to committees so it can hide, hide away and die a slow, lonely death by eight thousand cuts. Please vote in favor of item forty-eight and forty-nine and establish the ci-, a citizens' police commission for the benefit of the citizens of Hoyoke. Thank you.
Next is Ann Talheimer.
Hello, uh Ann Talheimer, ninety-seven Brown, apartment two L. So I originally came in here to beef about the fact that the crosswalks where I live have not been painted in multiple years. And in fact, a year ago, y'all sent a notice over the DPW and they have still not been repainted. I watched a school bus run a stop sign this morning because nobody can see the lines. It's where Laurel T-bar is into brown. And there's plenty of money for shamrocks to get painted on streets, but we need some crosswalks and we need them soon. Um this, this is bogus. This is taking way too long. But what is also bogus is that in, the last time I was in here. But what is also bogus is that in, the last time I was in here, I was talking about how a member of this body talked about me in a public meeting. I was called a reoccurring nightmare. And I saw that same kind of discussion and timber happening last city council meeting. Your comments were amazing and absolutely right on, and I want to call that behavior out. We talk all the time about being civil and kind to one another, but I want to see my city government actually do it. Not just the way that you talk about me as a voter, but the way that you talk to each other. I was embarrassed and disgusted, by the way, two members of this body talked to professional women, right, who were in here doing their jobs. And the way that you talked to them and talked over them and yelled at them was reprehensible.
Add a minute.
And if you cannot treat each other with respect, you should not be in this chambers. That's not what I voted for. That's not the representation I want to see, and I want you to do better. I want to stop having to come back in here and be like, stop behaving like jerks to each other. Please do good, responsible, efficient, respectful government. Thank you.
Nathan Chung.
Hi, Nathan Chung, 9 Prue Avenue, apartment 4A. I'll just talk quickly about a few items. First one, item one and nine, the Kmart Plaza zoning change request. So it's just my opinion, informal opinion as an individual and a general member of the public, not representing any kind of public body. So per MGL, chapter 40A, section 5, the zoning change request by a single non-owner is likely invalid unless there are some additions in the Hoyoke City Charter. So in cities, per that section 5 I just mentioned, the city council, the affected property owner, 10 registered voters, planning board, regional planning agency, and other methods provided by municipal charter can initiate zoning ordinance changes. The non-owner applicant doesn't seem to be in any of those groups. There is a timeliness requirement to give the request to the planning board within 14 days of receiving the request. And also, you gotta hold a public hearing within 65 days after the planning board received the request. So if the request is invalid, it's likely the whole thing is probably moot. So it'd be nice if you, excuse me, quickly just process this, make this determination. And also, even if it's a valid request, change the zoning is arguably a disallowed spot zone according to MGL, that's Massachusetts General Law, chapter 40A, section 4. Second thing, the item 22D about
Add a minute.
One minute, accessory dwelling unit. So I think the whole initiative about the ordinance is a good start, but the question is whether it is effective to add another special permit burden to the city council. Many of the applicants who are going for the ADUs will likely be, literally be like mom and pop property owners hoping to create multi-generational homes for family members. So if it's gonna be a special permit process or any other kind of process, it has to be, both the process and the outcome should be as streamlined, transparent, and consistent as possible while minimizing stress for everybody involved. And according to MGL, chapter 40A, section 5, an ADU amendment only requires a simple majority to pass, so you guys don't have to worry about trying to get the super majority. And the last thing about the CPA question that keeps coming up, I just wish, maybe it was already addressed somewhere in the official paper, but I just want to know the numbers, like how much am I saving? So CPA surcharge, if your assessed value of the property is less than $100,000 or
We're at our time.
Okay. Permission to have 15 more seconds? $100,000 or assessed value or less, you pay literally zero. So if your assessed value is $100,000 or less, this will not change anything. After that, every $100,000 additional property value. If you're in a residential property, $9.38 per year of savings with this proposed reduction. And if you own a commercial property, every $100,000 after the initial $100,000, you save $20.09 a year. So please be transparent about the savings if you're gonna push this as a savings thing because a general property tax rate would be nice, you know, I might be in favor of that, but you're targeting to kind of decimate a very specific program.
We're at our time now.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Spencer Fox Peterson online.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having my call. First of all, I just want to say thank you for having online availability. As a working person, it's hard to get to these meetings, so I appreciate that, and I would like to recommend keeping this program going forward. Number two, as a homeowner in Hoyoke, I'm calling from 51 Portland Street, just because I didn't say that. I support the tenants' rights union, or Office of Tenants' Rights, excuse me, and I think we should definitely invest in that. And thirdly, I would like to remind everybody that there were people here complaining about police, which is normally why I'm here. If nobody's aware, there are, one of the captains is currently in court regarding sexual misconduct against somebody within the ranks. It's an unsafe working environment. This is my, I've been saying this for years, everybody else has been saying, a lot of people say this stuff, and this is an eternal rot that can't be fixed from the outside. We need oversight, we need transparency, and I also echo the same sentiment as the gentleman earlier regarding Chief Pratt's leadership. This cannot stand, and it's a poor reflection on us, and there's no reason why we have to keep making the same errors over and over again. So if you want to talk about saving money, defund and eventually abolish the police because if we want a happy, healthy society, we can't always just throw things in cages. So house people, help people stay housed.
Add a minute.
Let's do this. Thank you. Have a great rest of your day, everybody.
Anyone else online? No one else online? No one else in the chamber?
Yes. Happy Easter.
Happy Easter. With that, we're on, we're on to communications.
Mr. President? This is point of order. Yeah. Because I was like, did we take care of one and nine? I think I was walking on what we did.
One and nine have been taken care of. They were referred back to the clerk.
Great, thanks. Okay. Thank you.
All right, so with that, five is a reappointment to the planning board.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion and send that to public service, please.
Second. Five to public service, all those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Six is another reappointment of George Mehdi, which is Commissioner, Fire Commissioner, sorry.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. All those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed.
Aye.
Seven is a letter from the mayor and the school building committee regarding
Isn't that the finance? Mr. President? They're gonna be, they're gonna be in before finance in May.
Okay, so all those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Uh, we did eight, nine, 10 is the order for the general fund and sewer budget.
Copy to finance.
To finance, all those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. 11 is the minutes for us for March 21st. Motion to receive and adopt, unless there's any changes. All those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. 12 is the settlement agreement between the city of Hoyoke and the
Finance.
So that would be finance, all those in favor.
Aye.
And that's the police officers local 388. 13 is hedics minutes for October 27th and 29, and January 26th and February 23rd.
Motion to receive.
Motion to receive, all those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. 14 is from the members of the Hoyoke Conservator's Commission, which is a letter of views of the Hoyoke Community Preservation Act. Motion be received. All those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. 15 is the Board of Public Works, which would be a report and recommendation to keep Hoyoke green and clean.
Oh, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and test, I want to send it to DGR, if you're okay with that. Okay, yeah, and just under discussion?
Yeah, Councilor.
Yeah, we had a, we had a really good discussion last night, and there's a lot of recommendations of PVPC, the mayor, there's a lot of input, but I don't want this to just sort of linger in, in the ether. So I'm hopeful we can just have, maybe just a ever-so-brief conversation, DGR about it, maybe have a chance to digest it a little bit more and think about it. There was a great discussion in finance about this, and finance did its job. Now I want to just talk about, a little more about, about recycling and, and waste this ball. I want to hear a little more about the timing in particular relative to the, to the ARPA funds that are going to be dispersed for the trash bins. I hope the public is becoming aware of that. That was, more details were given last night, so hopefully once it's brought up, we'll have even more detail. So if we're gonna send this to DGR and then maybe a copy to, if just a communication to Public Works, we can maybe invite them in as well. Thank you.
All right, so this is to receive and refer to DGNR.
And just a copy to Public Works, just invite them.
Copy to Public Works.
Yeah, thanks.
All those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Uh, let's see here. Next would be 16, which is from Dave Conti, which is the annual report of violations issued by the Mass Environmental Police.
Motion to receive. On your discussion?
Yeah, Councilor Riley.
Yeah, so Jim Leahy came up with this a few years ago, and it's just a helpful report. So I want to thank Jim for his diligence in asking for this some time ago. But I also want to sort of say thank you to Mr. Conti and the commissioners at the waterworks because they're staying on point with this stuff, and they're really, you know, clamping down on, on violators and trying to make that, keep that area as pristine as they possibly can. So credit to Councilor Leahy, emeritus, and credit to the water commissioners. So I don't think we need to have any further discussion because the report says what it says, but it was very helpful to read.
All right, so motions to receive, all those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. 17 is communication from Counselor Jordane regarding legal opinion from June 1, 2021.
Uh, Mr. President, can I make a motion to suspend, take this? And I think there's a, it's probably a late file, be my guess, because I Late File A. Well, if that's what it is, Pete, I don't remember, but it was, it was another, it was kind of a similar legal opinion. Uh, on, is it legal opinion on the topic we had last time, last meeting, on the two-thirds? And I don't remember, it is a late file Brenner, right? Is it A?
A.
Okay.
You have a late file A. Yep.
So if, my motion is to suspend the rules, take them up together, and then once we do that, I'll make another motion.
Second. Motion to suspend the rules, take up 17 and late File A, all those in favor.
New discussion?
All opposed. Counselor McGivern?
Are we suspending the rules to take final action?
No, Joe.
Not, not as of yet.
Thank you.
I was gonna make, I was gonna make another motion, Joe.
Counselor Hartley.
I was gonna make a motion to send it to, send them both to charter rules for a discussion because they're kind of on charter and rules, so I thought that would, I thought that would bear
I'll second that.
So 17 and late File A to charter and rule, Counselor Jordane.
Yeah, Mr. President, that's a good motion. That's the same motion I was gonna make to send it to charter rules. I did want to just point out, I don't want to get too much into it, but there was, as you know, and I think it was alluded to at the last meeting, that I have a penchant for keeping old legal opinions. And there was one here from two years ago that came to an opposite opinion to the one that came out last meeting. So, but the reason I wanted to point out to the body that there was a footnote at the bottom of page two of the legal opinion from the last meeting, and in it, it articulates that the reason there was a reversal. And let's just refresh everybody's memory, the question is, is it only those members present and voting, or do our rules require that it be based on the entire membership? I, as you know, stated pretty clearly that I came down to the opinion that our rules are pretty clear and have been relative to that the numbers are counted based on the entire membership. Well, as it turns out, there was this opinion from 2021 that agreed with me and said exactly what I said at the last meeting. And in the footnote, it should be noted that they state that the reason their opinion has changed is because the rules of the council changed from December 11th, 2017 to the current version, which is as of June 2022. And I want to point out for those that are reading these things that the rules did not in fact change. The wording of the two rules are exactly the same as they were in 2017, as they are today. And the only thing that changed was the numbering of the rules, such that in, on December 11th, 2017, we had a Rule 66, which this legal opinion spoke to. That is now Rule 1 under our rules. And Rule 38 is now Rule 8K. So the numbering of the rules changed, but if you look at the rules from December 11th, 2017, and June of 2022, as it relates to these two points, it's word for word the same. So I did want to just point that out, and I look forward to the discussion. I understand there's another legal opinion that came in late file. Have not had an opportunity to review that yet. I'll appreciate the law department supplementing their legal opinion. I'll certainly give it due diligence, and I'm sure we'll have an opportunity to discuss it together. And it should be noted that, in my opinion, it is also the way these rules should be discussed, not in the 11th hour at a council meeting. They should be brought up so that we can have a thoughtful conversation in committee. So look forward to that whenever that's gonna happen. Not a rush, but it would be helpful to have that discussion.
On the motion. So that'll be to charter and rules.
Charter and rules, please.
All those in favor.
I guess my hand doesn't count.
Oh, no. Counselor McGivern, go ahead.
I raised my hand, Mr. President, to speak in favor of the motion and refer this to charter and rules.
Thanks, Joe. That's what I was just saying. All those in favor? All opposed.
Aye.
I was thinking ahead. All right, so 18 is neighbor-to-neighbor letter regarding a need for an office of tenant protection.
Uh, you know, I'll be happy to make a motion, receive, and send this to DGR if you want to have a top conversation about it. Or do you want to send it to public safety? Which ever one?
To DGNR?
I'm sure either one of us would be happy to.
All right, so to DGNR, or unless, well, no, maybe.
I have qualms with that.
You did the last one, so I don't
DGNR's cool. I think.
All right. Let's have a talk.
Motion is to DGNR, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, 19 is Fire Commission, which would be February 16th minutes.
Motion to receive.
All those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed.
Mr. President, can we take 20 and 21 together, suspend the rules, take them as a package? And if that passes, can we then pass them both because they're both renewals, assuming they
20 and 21, suspend rules, take them as a package, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
20 is a renewal of a second-hand license for 311 High Street. 21 is a renewal of 19 pool tables, one billiard table at 151 Chestnut. Let me just check. Taxes are current, so motion would be receive and grant the renewal, if there were conditions. I'm not sure if there were conditions, but pending those conditions.
Yeah, the motion is to grant renewal pending any and all conditions, and it's a roll call, right?
Anyone further on these? Seeing none, the clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for 20 and 21, the renewals.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Malden Adalvez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rambleddy?
Yes.
Poiolo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tommen?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Unanimous vote. Unanimous vote.
I had it written, but I didn't... With your vote, you approve that one. President's Report, just a reminder, three o'clock on the sixth, which would be Thursday, the dedication here at City Hall. Also, it's just gonna be raining, that's why the weather reports will be upstairs, right? Upstairs. Just to follow up, this is from the mayor, is a communication to me. Uh, in response, Mr. President, in response to inquiries from members of the council regarding desire for a special hearing of the council to take place to discuss plans for implementing recommendations of the recent police audit, please know that I do not plan to have such a dedicated hearing with the council at this time. I do, however, look forward to having a discussion at the council meeting in regards to updates as we present plans and implementing strategies that will require legislative approval. More on this to come, especially as we prepare for the budget for fiscal year 24. But you know, I do want to express my support of an order that is submitted soon or is ready to establish a citizens' board known as a police commission. I have a dedicated board overseeing the department. Will help the oversight of implementation of the strategies and the properly navigate the department's obligation to mitigate liabilities. These powers currently sit with the mayor per our charter. By delegating these executive powers to the board, I believe it would take strength and oversight and accountability in the business that would have to be done following open mean laws. And he goes on with regards to that. So this is a follow-up to the request that was to me to ask on that hearing. And that is, there's a response as of right now, with more to come. Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Todd, that's a good summary. Just two quick things. One, I just wanted to let the council know that I did attend the Seek flag raising. Rep Duffy was there, gave some really nice remarks, really important remarks about the work that's been done in the House to recognize, to recognize the Seek Faith for the Commonwealth of Mass. And then, last night, I referenced the meeting we had. I did say to the mayor, if you want, because we have an ordinance on the books relative to having a commission for recycling. I suggested if he wants to file an order to put it under my name, and we can send it to ordinance, not to ordinance, to public service at some point. And maybe see if we can find some candidates to fill that commission, which would be really helpful. Just on the Seek Faith, it was a small gathering, but it was really, really well done. The flag raising was terrific. And the members of the community, while it wasn't a, it was a rainy, kind of a miserable day, they really came out, and it was such a, it was such a nice event. And that's just something I like to hearken back to how this was started. Danny Bresnahan certainly, certainly had a lot to do with them coming in originally, somebody years ago. And so I want to make sure he's remembered for doing that. Thank you.
Anyone further? Counsel Dom?
Yeah, as Representative of the School Building Committee, there is a public meeting tomorrow night at Hoyok High School on Beach Street from five-thirty to seven o'clock in person. And also next, on the tenth of April, there's a meeting, a virtual meeting, from twelve to one PM. And many residents got the flyer and picked them up. And if anybody can make that meeting tomorrow night, it's open to the public. And to find out, is it possible that, you know, we can get a new middle school over at Peck? So it's a very important meeting. Hopefully, many of the residents at home could attend that meeting. It'll be in the cafeteria there.
Thank you very much. So with that, we're on to committees. First one is ordinance, twenty-two A. Commandant Orns was referred, nor that the ordinance be created that requires that one notices need to be sent to a butters for public notices involving lots without billings that the addresses closest to subject property listed as reference point, plus a plot plan line, lot line, recommend that be adopted. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. President. So the motion is to pass the first reading, receive, adopt the committee report, and pass the first reading.
Motion to receive, adopt, pass the first reading, our discussion?
Thank you. So this came up, you may recall, because of the lot where the White Hut will soon hopefully be built. And there was confusion in the neighborhood that required a re-noticing. So you all have the legal form before you that has added for our ordinances a reference point that would be able to be recognized as the general public doesn't relate or have a reference point for parcel numbers. This way, they'll receive parcel number and closest address to the lot that doesn't have a building. Thank you.
Anyone further?
Uh, Mr. President?
Counsel Jordane?
Briefly, I did want to just thank the ordinance committee for acting on my order so quickly. And it was really appreciated that we can give, in some of these scenarios, especially on long streets, that citizens really couldn't figure out where they're getting a notice with some lot number on it, and they have no idea as a reference point where. So I did want to thank the committee and the Law Department both for acting so quickly to get this fixed. And I know people will appreciate this when they get these notices in the future. Thank you.
Seeing no one further, motion is to pass the first reading, all those in favor? All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion to pass the second reading, all those in favor? All those opposed?
And motion that the passage be ordained?
Motion that the passage be ordained, the clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for twenty-two A.
Bartley?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Maldonado-Vales?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy-Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Holman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve that one. Twenty-two B, commandant Orns was referred. In order that the city council create an ordinance that creates a food truck zone in the city, recommend that be adopted. Motion be receive, adopt, pass the first reading, Counsel Bacon.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Yes, that is the motion. And this was an interesting discussion, because we really didn't have definitions for food trucks, and we were doing individual licenses. And so now, through the legal language that you all have before you, we've created it as a defined activity in the city. And our intent was also, and I'll let the maker of the order speak more specifically on it if he wishes, but the intent was also that down the road, we could designate certain areas in the city so that if a person is licensed to have a food truck, they, through the Board of Health, they could just be allowed to go to a particular area of the city if we deem it to be desirable for that activity. Thank you.
Counsel Mallo-Vales?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think you made a chair for that recap. I know this order has been, was in committee for a while, lots back and forth, zoning, not zoning, all that. I believe this is a good first step towards what we, towards what we wanted with the order, was to create food truck zones. But I think the first step is having language in our ordinance that defines what food trucks are. I think it wasn't very clear. And I think this, like I said, is a good first step. I think one of the, had some conversations with different individuals in the past week, whether this like adds more barriers and whatnot. I will say, like, the one sort of, I don't call it barrier, but like the new ordinance law that we put in is that a food truck cannot be placed within one-hundred-and-fifty feet from a brick-and-mortar. I think the conversation around that was simply, you know, the brick-and-mortar costs are much higher than food trucks. And, you know, if you are doing a brick-and-mortar, you don't want to have food trucks sort of competition to be that quick in front of you. So I think, you know, everything else in this ordinance language is things that show up in other parts of our ordinance. Just now, they're actually put under a food truck section, which makes it easier for people, you know, that are trying to get licensed in the city. You know, they can look at our ordinances and be like, oh, there's actually a food truck section, and know what they need to do. So that's what I need to say, thank you.
Anyone further? Motion is to pass the first reading, all those in favor? All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is to pass the second reading, all those in favor? All opposed?
And motion that the passage be ordained?
Motion that the passage be ordained, the clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for twenty-two B.
Bartley?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Maldonado-Vales?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy-Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Holman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve that one. Twenty-two C, the commandant Orns was referred. In order that the city of Hoyok, having previously accepted the provisions of MasterCard Law, Chapter fifty-nine, Section Five, does now further adopt and extend such acceptance as long as permitted under state law, recommend that be adopted. Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. So the motion is to receive and adopt the committee report. And it is simply to adopt a state law that we had previously adopted, that has been continued, so that as long as the state does continue it, we will as well.
Anyone further? So motion is to receive and adopt. And this is the one allowing the assessor to grant real and personal property tax abatement to those active-duty members of the National Guard and Reserves serving in foreign countries. So motion is to receive, adopt. Clerk will call a roll with regards to this one. Because I think we're extending it.
Bartley?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Maldonado-Vales?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy-Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Holman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve that one. Twenty-two D, commandant Orns would refer the city council review and amend Section five-point-four, the zoning ordinance to allow for dwelling units, ADUs, in the DR zone. Single-family homes, recommend that the order be adopted. Counsel Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. So the motion is to receive and adopt the committee report and pass the first reading.
Second. With that, under discussion, Counsel Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is a new step to try a variation for housing within the DR zone. And we had some good discussion between our committee and the planning board. And it was felt that this would be a way to offer some flexibility for people that we haven't had in the past. And so we're hoping, sort of, to continue to look at these type of more innovative ideas and move forward with them, and see if they could not be expanded to other areas of the city if they're successful starting in the DR zone first. Thank you.
Anyone further? Counsel Barrett?
Yeah, I just want to speak in favor. I co-sponsored this, and I also want to just make note that Mayor Murphy, when he was a city councillor, he and I worked on something very similar to this. And then, when he became mayor, we worked on it further. And so it's nice to see that this is possibly coming to fruition to give more housing opportunities for people in Hoyok. So I'm pretty excited about it if it passes, thanks.
Counsel McGivern?
If I could just ask a question through the chair, in favor of the committee report, in favor of the proposal. I just got struck by the language. It says, "The definition is added after ATM and before accessory use." I'm reading, I just wanted to make sure I'm reading it correctly. We're not changing the definition of ATM or having any impact on where ATMs fit into the use table?
It's an alphabetical reference, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so motion is to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion to pass the second reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
And motion that the passage be ordained?
Motion that the passage be ordained, clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for twenty-two D.
Bartley?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Maldonado-Vales?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy-Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Holman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve that one. Twenty-two E, commandant Orns was referred. In order a special permit extension application for Four Trees Hoyok LLC to operate dispensary and cultivation establishment at one Cabot Street, recommend that the special permit extension be granted with all original conditions. Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. So the motion is to receive and adopt the committee report and grant the special permit extension for one year.
For one year. Under discussion, Counsel Bacon?
Thank you. So this was a rather complicated request for an extension. But to give a thumbnail sketch, the Four Trees special permit was granted. And then, in the context of COVID and financing challenges and ownership change considerations, the organization, or the business, is currently in process of changing ownership. And so, given the consideration of the significant investment and that there had been significant progress made, with advice from legal committee feels we are on safe ground to recommend to the full council that we do grant this extension to allow this business to get up on its feet. Thank you.
Anyone for this? All right, motion is to grant the extension for one year. The clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the extension.
Bartley?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Maldonado-Vales? McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera? Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Holman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Twelve yeas, one abstain.
Your vote, you approve that one. Twenty-two F, commandant Orns was referred. In order a special permit extension for high-end management LLC at one-ten Winter Street, have considered, recommend the special permit extension be granted with all original conditions. Motion to receive, adopt, grant the extension, Counsel Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. This was pretty straightforward. It is the original permittee that is continuing development. They were able to come in and show that a significant amount of progress had been made, but they were needing to complete a few more steps and anticipate being able to be up and operating within the year extension of the permit. Thank you.
So motion is to approve the extension, clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the extension.
Bartley?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Maldonado-Vales?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Puelo? Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Holman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Twelve yeas, one abstain.
Your vote, you approve that one. Twenty-two G, commandant Orns was referred. Nor that we create a food economy coalition. Oh, no, we're having a tough one tonight. Request that be taken up ASAP as the order is attached for grant funding. Recommend that the same, recommend that the order has been complied with. Request that OPED provide an update to the city council on the progress of the grant. Counsel Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. So the committee is recommending that this is complied with with because we were informed that the language of the grant actually gives the mayor the authority to take the actions that were requested of the committee. But we would like to hear an update relative to how the coalition comes together and how it does down the road. Thank you.
All right. So, recommend that be complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then, 22H, the command ordinance was referred. In order that one out of two handicap parking signs at 588 Salisera Street, as well as the third sign on Morgan Street be removed, recommend that this be leave to withdraw. Counsel Vacan.
Thank you, Mr. President. With the agreement of the maker of the order, the committee is recommending to give this leave to withdraw. The maker of the order, Counsel Puelo, met with our city engineer. They figured out specifically what language is needed, and I believe it's been filed on tonight's agenda. So, we will take it up to get it accomplished. Thank you.
All right. So, motion is to leave, withdraw. All those in favor?
Aye.
On to...
Thank you, committee.
Good job, committee.
Good job. 23 Finance, 23A, community finance was referred. Fiscure 23 Community Preservation Act Recommendations, recommend that be adopted. Motion to receive, adopt. Counsel McGivern.
Mr. President, if I could just start with asking to suspend the rules on this vote to make it a two-part vote. There are six projects, as we know, that were referred to the city council and reviewed by the CPA and recommendation referred to the city council for our review. And at the request of a couple city councillors, I'd like to take the first five projects, which are city-owned projects as a package, and then the sixth project, which is privately owned, as a separate vote. I make that a motion to suspend the rules for...
Motion to suspend rules, take up the first five. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Counsel McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. We did have the chair of CPA before us, Representative, our city councillor Izzy Rivera. And we had a very good discussion on the recommendations of this phase of CPA. Just very quickly, because I think they speak for themselves, but the first one is $100,000 Scott Tower Anniversary Phase Two project is moving forward. We thank our conservation commissioner, along with the Kestrel Land Trust people, about this incredible project that I can't wait to see the fruition when we start looking at the opening up of the Scott Tower Anniversary Hill project itself. Likewise, the second one is Glutech Woods Trail Improvements, Phase Two, $46,000. This would be a number of different work being, and I'm sorry, investments in the improvement and the design of the trails in this project. And number three is Jones Point. It defers to our open space, as is the... The third one is recreational open space, which would be improvements in amenities to the Jones Point Park in the city. I think most of us are familiar. Jones Point is a very well actively used park that could use some help, and it's 32,500. Wisteria Hare's museum, preservation planning to damages, in particular of this historic building owned by the city, used as a museum, as dedicated by the family, the former Skinner family, when the city took it over. But a lot of this deals with an aging building that needs to be taken care of. And this $95,000 will go, including the carriage house, will go towards that. And the fifth one is a little bit smaller in dollars, but I think very important. It's a $9,900 request that the basement documentary recovery project. Many of us, I don't think we always think of this, but we're sitting on the first floor of City Hall right here, with the entrance being out to our left, Dwight Street, the main entrance. The basement floor is down below us. There's a sub-basement. And that sub-basement, if you're brave enough to ever go into, is incredible with what you'll find down there. But there are records that have been there for, let's say, longer than some of us have been on the city council. And I think the city clerk can attest to it, that they are records that should be preserved and should be saved. And they're not all in great shape because of the dampness of the floor down there. And that doesn't even talk about the boarded-up tunnel to the old bud, but we'll save that conversation for another night. But the committee recommends that we approve the CPA, these five CPA projects, as recommended by the CPA. It's the final step in their adoption.
Counsel Bartley.
Yeah, I'm going to speak in favor of all of them. So, I think the finance committee watched that whole meeting, went through everything. I thought it was well done. I want to thank the clerk for stepping up on that as well, recognizing that. I'm hopeful that there's a few other things that are coming forth, especially this Room 11. Some of the old government photos, Mr. President, that are just sort of sitting there in a stack, and they could use some attention in terms of preservation. And so, there's more work to be done about Holyoke's history. And I think that's really important, that the clerk stepped up on that. It's a small ask. And then, the rest of it is things that we've heard about before. I mean, I understand, I've spoken about Wisteria Hare before, so I'm going to vote for this, Glutech. We supported that heavily a few years ago, and I'm proud of that vote as well. So, this is something to continue a legacy for recreation and for Holyoke's history. And I think they're very important, all of it's very important. So, it's a wise use of CPA funds, and a nice job by the committee. And I'm going to vote in support. Thank you.
So, motion would be to receive, adopt, and... What? Oh, I'm sorry. Counsel Verne, I didn't see you.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to say I vote in support of all the projects. And I'm also appreciative that we actually have the CPA at the level that we have now to be able to do the things that we're doing now. Because later on, if things change, we might not be able to run at the same capacity without having an administrative assistant. Thank you.
All right. So, motion is to approve these five. Clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for these five.
Bartley?
Yes.
And Givner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado-Valez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy-Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Vacan?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
We vote you approve those five. The last one, Counsel McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you for allowing us to separate this vote. The committee did vote four to one in favor of the recommendation by the CPA. The one standing vote is Counsel Jordan. I'll let Counsel Jordan speak for himself, of course. But his concerns, I think, are more about the ownership of the property itself. So, as far as the committee report goes, and then I'll share my own opinions, but the committee believes that this is a historic building, that this particular project, it's 106-120 High Street. We, most of us know it as the Warnock Furniture Store for so many years, but the architecture is very unique and part of the historic district, part of the historic district, I think, in the city that could use a lot of help, not just with facades, but certainly with facades. The owners of the building were present at the committee. They did answer some of our questions, talked for a little bit. They are present this evening. The project was reviewed by the CPA. It qualifies under the historic category. I believe it is part of what the CPA is meant to do, is that historic buildings need to be preserved. They're part of our, not just our infrastructure, but they're part of our economy and part of our well-being. I think CPA is designed, not just to do public buildings and public-owned projects. I think it's designed for the better of the whole of the city itself in the three categories that it addresses, and certainly historic. I think whether it's publicly or privately owned, it makes it a worthy project. I will point out, Counsel Bartley just mentioned it, but we do have a list from the mayor at request, I believe it was Counsel Jordan, Bartley, Vacan, and a number of other people signed on, of projects that the city does own that could be beneficial if the CPA dollars are put towards them. Unfortunately, those projects have not been put before the CPA yet. And I think the mayor heard us, as a body of the whole, we are encouraging him to start looking at these different projects and start making proposals to use CPA, perhaps our money to do some of these. One, this room itself, I think, is not just because it's our room and our chambers, but I think the historic significance of this room and the mural and everything that's taken place in this particular room and this particular building is very important to be preserved. And I think that would be certainly on the top of my list if I was sitting in Room One. But the committee does recommend four to one that we adopt it, even though it's not publicly owned. We think it's a worthy project. It does qualify, and the CPA recommended it unanimously.
Counsel Jordan.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to thank Chairman McGivern, who did a fantastic job running the meeting. And I also appreciate his consideration in separating out this vote, so I can take my principal position. Number one, a couple of points. Again, I will come back to 30 years ago, I was in the minority view. You know, a number of people have made certain comments relative to, you know, why haven't you accomplished more, Mr. Jordan? You know, you've been here all these years. And largely because I've been in the minority view. And I think things historically would have turned out different if I was in the majority view. I think this is a type of vote that is also an example of that. I expect to be in the minority position. But sort of like you also see on the Supreme Court dissenting opinions, they become the opinions of a future court. And so, I hearken out to the future. And I think, and I want to appreciate what the mayor has already done, because I think he's embraced some of my points that I've made. Not that this particular Warnock building is not wonderful potential project, or these owners are wonderful people. And I had an extremely thoughtful conversation with them, and I really appreciate it. And I think their heart is absolutely in the right place. The point is that we're just not at that stage yet. A couple of things I want to add to the discussion. Number one is monies that we don't spend this year are available to us in future years. So, there's no requirement that we spend this $250,000. And I should point out, that is a hefty sum of money. That is one-third of all the CPA money that we collect in any given year is going to this private company to do this improvement. It's like $250,000 as part of a bigger $6 million that they could spend. So, we're going to, the taxpayers of Hoyok are subsidizing them, giving them our tax money, and we're going to go and subsidize this project. Now, there's hopefully a day and a time and a place in the future that Hoyok can do that. But for now, Mr. President, we need to focus on our public projects first. We have a whole host of historic projects that we here in city government need to get done with our own public buildings, whether it's walls falling down at Wisteria Hare, whether it's murals falling off the walls in the city council chambers. Those projects deserve first attention because these are tax dollars, an added tax to every citizen of this city. And their money should go to their own public projects, which the reason theoretically these things weren't done, as I understand them in the past, is we didn't have the money to do them. Well, now you have the money right here to work on these projects, and we're literally giving the money away to a private entity and not doing public projects as an alternative. I, in good conscience, nothing against that, but I, in good conscience, cannot vote to do that when I know, and I'm taking this principal position, that public projects come first. Because when you think about the impact, and when we think about inflation, and we think about taxes, and we think of the burden that we're putting on homeowners every day, what we're saying is to the resident that lives up on Beach Street, you know that extra $40 you sent down to City Hall? I know you can't do maybe your windows, or that's 40 coming out of your budget in your family. And we're going to literally give that money away to a private company out of your budget. And we're not using this for a public purpose. We're using this to give to a private entity. Now, if all the public projects were done, and we were all set, and everything was buttoned up, and we wanted to tackle perhaps some really worthy private projects, hopefully that's a great day ahead of us. But Hoyok needs to reinvest itself. We're literally walking around pretending like we don't have financial problems in this community. This is a classic example of us giving away $250,000 that we cannot afford to give away. All right? We don't have an extra $250 laying around. And that's exactly what we're saying by casting a yes vote here. I think we need to focus on our public projects first. We should save this money, embrace that list that the mayor has put forward. And it's too bad that more public projects have not come forward to the CPA committee. The good news is, I think we've lightened the fire there, and I think we're going to see those. And I'm sure the CPA committee will take on these historic projects for the city of Hoyok. And I really look forward to exhausting that list and as we move forward. But again, nothing against these fine people. It's just we need to put the city's house in order first before we're in a position to be giving away tax money. Thank you so much for your time.
Counsel Rivera.
Thank you, Counsel. Mr. President, I have a couple of questions for the people that are applying for CPA, if we could possibly do that. If not, then that's totally okay.
Because we already ticked that up in...
I have no issues. So, for me, is they are also taxpayers, right? They probably pay significantly more than most of us in taxes because they have probably a higher tax rate or tax percentage. Then the other piece is, for every project that comes out of CPA, there has to be a requirement of some form of public good. This project does that in the fact that the building, although it is their building at the moment, it wasn't their building always, and it won't always be their building. The building is a structure that will stay in place if taken care of and maintained for however many years, as long as it's maintained and taken care of, to the extent that it needs to be taken care of. So, in a sense, they're kind of tapping into some of the money that they're putting in, first of all, right? And then, second of all, they're trying to create public good with regards to trying to make sure that we're not losing buildings that actually are historic to the city of Holyoke. I remember Immaculate Conception Church on 54 North Summer Street, one of the biggest, most beautiful churches I've ever seen in my life. It's no longer around. Matter de la Rosa no longer around. Our later Propeltor Hope, which used to be, if I'm correct, Sacred Heart, or PH, used to be Sacred Heart, right? And where that is going to be next supposedly, that we might lose, right? So, ultimately, if CPA was around then, and we would be helping those buildings, they're not owned by the city either, right? So, we don't have applications in front of us from the city. So, I hear you. I hear the counselor with regards to that, because if that's what we had, that is what I would be advocating for at CPA. But that is not what was put in front of us. So, what it is, is we're trying to spend the money in a way where it's effective and efficient for everyone overall. This is just this project. The historical district over there in Ward Seven, they can come in and apply too if they want to too. There is different ways to come in to CPA and use some of the money that you actually put in. But there's a criteria, and there's a process for that. For me, public projects do come first. That is something that I would also be in favor too as well. But again, it's not something that's on the table right now. And for us to speak of something that doesn't actually exist, it's kind of not fair to the applicants. It's not fair to CPA and the work that they actually been doing, because they put in a lot of time and effort into what they're doing. So, it would make sense for us to take the advice of the committee that we put in place, right, to move forward the CPA projects. So, for me, I guess, I don't know, man, like, I'm sure they've invested tons of money already into their building, right? And it's not just them per se. There are other projects that are coming down the road that are going to be private more than likely. And if there is no public projects up on the table, then what are we going to do? Just keep our money in our pocket for the next 10 years, or whenever the city is ready to actually put something forward? I mean, for some people, that would be great, right? Just to not spend no money at all. But for some other people, the idea or the intention is, is that like, we're paying taxes for something that's going to, that is supposed to beautify or take care of the historic piece of our city, or the outside playgrounds, whichever piece it is. It's three different buckets. And if we choose to not pursue some of these projects just because we want to hold our money in the coffers until the mayor decides to put something forward, then the other piece, the last piece I would say, is that the list is great, right? But I just want people to know that I've been on the CPA commission for about four years. And when Joshua Zai was knocking on doors, this is one of the first things he said he was going to do when he has a chance to, right? So, the list is great, and I'm glad people put it forward. But I'm sure this was already on his agenda before the list came to him. Just putting it out there. Thank you.
Counsel Murphy-Rumbaletti.
Thank you. Just briefly, CPA, in my understanding, was not passed just to fund public projects. So, I guess I don't really see the world super black and white, and I feel like you can have both. And I think that's what we have before us. And my understanding was that CPA was to encourage growth and development in our community. And the proponents have invested a lot of money in the city. They pay taxes quite a bit. And we haven't lowered the commercial tax rate. And so, I didn't think that CPA was designed to sort of be the thing that the city uses to maintain city properties. So, I'll continue to vote in favor of both public projects and private projects, because CPA was not designed to only support public projects. So, thank you.
Counsel Givner.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's also my understanding that CPA funds are applied for and go before a committee who tediously molds over how to hand out those funds. So, I also see preserving a building and the facade of a building as, you know, public good. If we can make good on a historic building while taking away an eyesore and, you know, creating preservation, it's a benefit to the community, definitely. I do agree that it would be nice to prioritize city projects. But again, and I've said this before, if the city doesn't apply for the money, they don't get the money. So, until the city starts applying, they won't get the funds. I mean, it seems pretty straightforward to me. I do like the idea of the city applying for more things. But I also agree that, it was also not my understanding that this is like a new source for the city to preserve its buildings. So, that being said, I would definitely be in favor of this project and other similar projects.
Counsel Vacan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to make a couple of points. And one is that I do think it's significant that the money can be carried over. And I do think, because we're talking about tax money, and we've had a very long list of public properties that are historic, that need attention, that we should take advantage of the fact that we can carry it... that need attention, that we should take advantage of the fact that we can carry it over and get our house in order to use the taxes of our citizens for the public and the buildings that fall into the three categories of the CPA, which are set by state law. I also want to correct the record relative to the administrative assistant and the CPA. If the CPA goes to one percent from one point five percent, the administrative assistant will not be lost. That scenario was described when point five was being considered and was in large part the reason for the finance committee recommending the compromise one percent. So I just want the record to be clear in that regard. Um, I do think the CPA money has done a number of good projects. In this situation, I really want our city departments to get their arms around this tool. Um, to use it for our public buildings first. And then if we have extra monies, and I mean, to give two hundred and fifty thousand dollars makes it seem like we don't have a lot of other needs. And I guess I can hear the argument, well, they didn't apply. But I would like us to see our, see us get our house in order to be applying and hold some of the money over so that it will be available for things like the historic murals and other things that we've been talking about for years. Thank you.
Counselor Anderson Burgros.
As my colleagues already stated, you know, there's a process we had. There's a reason why people who represent the CPA and the process that I respect about it because these are individuals who are brilliant, talented. And the application that went before them, they approved, um, or recommended rather. And then they brought it in front of us. I've got, I've, I've had a chance to meet the gentleman behind the project. Let me, let me just state, listen, I just celebrated my fifty-third birthday and born and raised in the city. As I walked down High Street, little by little, parts of the city, the identity DNA of the city is, is disappearing. The Essex is a great example. And everybody was happy about the mall coming in, oh, it's gonna save us and this, this, that, while all true Holyokeers watched some of the most historical buildings in our community crumble. Again, CPA looked at the application and they were impressed by that application and they recommended it to us. What I found out about the gentleman before us was that this building is not just a storefront, but it's also nineteen units, nineteen apartments. Am I correct? Nineteen apartments, right? And what do I hear people having, struggling with now in our city? I can't find an apartment. I can't find an apartment. People who have been burnt out of their homes can't find an apartment. And we have these people, these gentlemen before us saying, I want to invest in Holyoke. People that don't even live here, they're, they're speaking with them, have more pride than some of the counselors in, in, in these chambers. They are proud of Holyoke. I guess some people just don't visit High Street as much as others. I guess they, they can easily just not look at the city because, you know, they don't hang down here. They don't care if it falls and crumbles. They don't care. They're up in their castles, up in the hill, literally. While the people that do live down here have watched it for years crumble. We have an opportunity here to make things right. Let's invest in Holyoke. Let's, let's help these gentlemen invest in our city. Let's be proud with them. Thank you.
Counselor Jordan.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. President again, and, and I'll refrain obviously from personal references against other people. I, I don't need to do those to, to enhance my argument. Um, and obviously, you know, I could go on about how many years, um, you know, I've been paying taxes in this town. Um, that, that would be such an easy comparison and where I lived and grew up uh, in, in Holyoke, living in Churchill and throughout and again, par for the course. I wonder if there'll be any speakers uh, at the next meeting on that topic. Um, but anyways, uh, back to the, to the matter at hand and that is that relative to a couple of points. One is that we have identified the problem, okay? The problem was they didn't have any public projects. So we've come up with the solution. We're giving the CPA committee public projects. This money is not required to be spent this year. It's saved. You put it in the piggy bank. You come forward with the public projects and now we can fund the public projects next year. Problem solved. That's what the city council is supposed to be doing. Looking out as good fiscal stewards of the city to make sure that we're not wasting money when, and, and getting our priorities squared away. This city is in no position financially to be giving away two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to anybody other than to fix our own problems right here. We have a laundry list of public projects that need attention. And that's where those two hundred and fifty thousand dollars should be going. If we could afford, if we were in better financial straits and we had everything already covered with the city, then we should do that. But we're not there yet. So that means we have a lot of work ahead and that's what it's all about, doing the work. We have to get our public projects, get them in order, fund them. Here's a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar pot to do it. And we've already identified the solution to fix the problem that there weren't public projects. We now have the list and we can come forward with those projects. As far as the tax goes, I want to touch on that for a moment. This property, as so I understand, is paying approximately ten thousand dollars a year in taxes. They're gonna go to about thirty thousand dollars, maybe as much as forty thousand dollars a year in taxes. It's gonna take like ten years to repay this two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Are the taxpayers of Holyoke getting free taxes for ten years? I don't think any of the people that are shelling out a hundred and twenty dollars like I do, I think it's a hundred and twenty-one dollars, I write a check for, for CPA. Or somebody else that's writing it for forty dollars or a hundred dollars or fifty dollars. I'm not getting free taxes for ten years. Is any, are these other, the residents who we're supposed to be looking out for? I mean, we're actually turning down and saying we don't have money for public projects and giving it to this. Again, I'm not gonna speak against these, these nice people and their, and their wonderful project. It's just we're not in a position to finance it. We have so many needs in this community. It's about a lack of prioritization for so many years, so many bad votes of this council that we just throw money away. And here's another example. Like we're, like we're big shots and we're going around and we're making speeches about how noble they are. Of course they're noble. They're wonderful people. But we don't, you can talk all day about how wonderful they are. You don't, you're in no financial position to give away two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of city money to a private entity. And if you think we are in that position, then you have no grasp on the financial condition of this community. Okay, so it's just another mistake. Put it in a laundry list of mistakes. I do appreciate the opportunity. I well-known, I was in the minority thirty years ago. I'm still on the minority on this council. If good Lord willing, as long as I'm here, I'll probably keep being on the minority. That's fine. I'll just, I continue to make my points and I tell the citizens, you know, it doesn't have to be this way, but this is, this is the situation. So again, I appreciate everyone listening and have a good evening.
Counselor McGivern.
Um.
No, Counselor McGivern.
Oh, I thought you said Rivera, my bad.
You're next, you're next.
Go right at us.
I have to try to keep my thought in my mind because it's long going.
I just, um, I, I try to make committee reports and give, you know, both all sides of a story as generically as possible and then interject my opinion as I stated. So I just want to take a quick minute to interject my opinion, why I'm in favor of this project and, and the way CPA money is used. I'm not disagreeing with the argument that public projects can be prioritized. And certainly we can put dollars towards public projects. There is money available and certainly they're, they're worthy of proposal, but let's, let's put things into perspective and there's a number of different reasons for supporting this type of a project. There are three categories of CPA. The historic seems to be the most popular. We've used it for public projects. We've used it for the stained glass windows upstairs. We have used it for wisteria hearse. We've used it for a, a number of different projects. But one that just, I was sitting with a friend over the weekend and he said to me something that struck me that, you know, why CPA is so important to this community. He told me he walked through Pigeon Park and I said, look, you can't call it Pigeon Park, you know, it's, it's our, it's a much different, it's memorial. You know, to our veterans, it's, it's Hampton Park, it's a lot of different things. But he, he laughed. He said, Joe, I looked at the Civil War monument and I could not believe the way that looks now as opposed to the way it looked six, seven years ago. He said, you can read the names of our veterans, you can read the, you know, the, what that memorial stands for. It is absolutely gorgeous and absolutely part of what this city always was, honoring veterans and honoring our history. And to me, that, that's what CPA is about. Now, we can go on and on again about public projects versus private projects. Block grant monies are taxpayers' dollars through the federal government, through HUD, through the state that we have used for years. They've dried up. One of the most popular programs that came out of block grant monies over the years, and I'm talking about infrastructure, not social agencies, was the facade improvement program for high and main streets. And I've heard so many counselors compliment that program for decades. Because it took buildings like the Valley Opportunity Project, I mean, I give them a lot of credit for the facade they did. But look at, look at the different projects, the Caledonian Building. Look at the architecture, the facades, the improvements of that one project, one part of block grant monies that's been used so wisely over the years. So why do I favor that? Because the investment brings back dollars. Counselor Jordan pointed out, it, it takes property that is not being used a hundred percent, helps them improve it with, with a private investment, mind you, and helps that, that, those properties get back on the tax roll. The, the, the building we're talking about, commercial space underneath, I'm not gonna, you know, talk about what's gonna go in there. Jobs are gonna be created. It's gonna be part of the entertainment district, which is so important to these three blocks of High Street. It's gonna bring more people downtown because whether it's Gateway, whether it's Heritage Park, High Street, Maple Street, we're seeing more and more people comfortable coming downtown, whether it's for entertainment, for, for restaurants, you know, for a number of different things. And that's why this project and CPA dollars is a good investment. Housing, the third category is, is the least used of CPA dollars and that's not what the vote is tonight. But housing is not, the, the one thing that we all agreed upon is the Library Park project. Private project that CPA dollars was used for, an investment in downtown. A gorgeous part of one of the most rundown streets in the city at one point. They're now looking the same people at Newton Street. You know, if they can turn Newton Street around the way they turned uh, Chestnut Street around by the library, by the Library Park itself, that's an incredible use of CPA dollars. I, I think this makes sense. The private investment, and I, I wrote it down, but I don't want to state it, but I know the private investment in this building is getting close to a million dollars. I, I could be wrong, but I'm just guessing. But that's what this is about. It's about a partnership in terms of investment. It's preserving an historic building, but at the same time, we're getting more for it because we're enhancing the entertainment district, we're enhancing housing, we're enhancing and working with private investment. That's what block grant monies were about. That's what CPA is about in my humble opinion and I'm in favor of this project.
Counselor Rivera.
I can't do nothing now, man. You just killed it.
He stole it.
Like you literally killed it. Thank you. Like I, I'm calm now, like everything is good. The only thing I would add is just like, if we're gonna stay with like consistency with regards to how we're managing our budget and our finances, then we need to pay attention to how we invest our money in the, in, 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 in our different departments across the whole budget, right? Because in reality, we have some issues in certain places where people are taking home over two hundred thousand dollars. And that's one of the issues we have with this particular uh, situation, right? Um, but nobody's making any comments or kicking and screaming with regards to that. Um, I don't want to point to particular situations because it's not about that. At the end of the day, what it's about is that there's a, there's an awesome project in front of us and it makes sense, uh, as Counselor McGivern pointed out, that for us to invest in the project and to reap the benefits of what the future would look like. And he's, our Counselor McGivern actually did a very good job and I don't want to respeak it, so I'm good.
Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, uh, thanks, Mr. President. Just a historic preservation can be public or private. We all know that and we're hopeful of that. Uh, also, and I know, um, a lot of us weren't here when we passed this six years ago, but um, you, you can go back and review the record. When we set up the CPA committee, uh, they recommend this body takes the final vote. That was really, to me, the most appealing part about it and that's why I voted to put it on the ballot because even though I voted against it at the ballot box, I said, well, it's, it's still gonna come before the city council and I thought that was very appealing. So we make the call on that. I hope that this message, it seems like this is probably gonna pass tonight. Uh, but the message that, that really is echoing is that we'd rather have public projects used to, to, to be the beneficiary of these funds as opposed to private sector dollars. But this prior speakers are right. We, it's historical preservation is just that. So I'm, I'm generally in line with what the CPA votes. I don't think I've ever not voted for the recommendation. I intend to vote for it tonight, but but the, uh, my, my real thinking is that the, the message is coming through loud and clear that we would much rather have public historic preservation as opposed to private. We respect the fact and I've said it multiple times. We really encourage and we want to continue to encourage private sector, uh, the, uh, uh, investment and, and it's, it's nice to see this is uh, still happening uh, in, in different parts of the city that aren't IG and aren't marijuana. So we, we, we need to sort of, um, when, when we can and when we're able and right now we're able. We have the funds. Now, can we, can we carry it over? Yes, we can carry it over, but uh, the, the time is now to start making sure we preserve some of these things to the best of our ability. But that's not to say we want to see many more of these, Mr. President. I'd rather see, like we said, the, the, the investment into Room Eleven, the investment into other, uh, other projects that are, um, like the prior speaker said, with uh, some of the monuments in uh, in Veterans Park, et cetera. So uh, with that, uh, that's, uh, I mean, like I said, I, I, I intend to vote for it tonight. I, I think the project's worthy. The finance committee does due diligence, like I said, a watchful meeting. Um, it's, it's not an easy vote for me, but it's one I think that makes sense. Thank you.
Counselor Tomlin.
Yeah, very, very important project and this is an investment. This is an investment on our community, an investment downtown and uh, and I understand where Counselor Jordan's coming. Of course, we do like to have public projects and, and, and I think that there's gonna be coming. They're gonna be coming down the road. But to, just across the street, we saw what happened to that building that was taken down. It was falling down right across the street from this project and uh, um, these, these gentlemen are, are, are taking their own money and I think it's well over a million dollars that they're investing into this building. Um, you got storefronts downstairs, you're gonna make apartments upstairs and you're taking a, a, an anchor of the city, you know, a very important part of the city and downtown. Um, and trying to bring people, they're trying to bring people to, to live here and to, to eat here and to, to shop here and uh, you know, we haven't seen that in years down here. I mean, I, I think this is, there's a resurgence in the city. Uh, I think people are starting to, to come downtown. People are starting to live downtown. Um, it's a very worthwhile project. I'm very much in support of this.
Anyone further?
Who, who, quick, Mr. President, one thing, real quick, just. Sure, Counselor, add. Real quick, just because like the CPA never identified this as a problem, just to be clear, right? This is something that was brought up by counselors as a problem. Um, and the solution was discovered by counselors, even though the CPA is the one, the body that does all the work and the legwork behind um, the actual projects. But I just wanted to hear that out and put it out there just so that we're clear, right? Because this is not coming from the CPA. This is coming from different counselors and if anything.
And if anything, people can always volunteer to be on the CPA too as well. Thank you.
Anyone further? Seeing none? Because it was mentioned a few times, Room 11, that'd be us. The mayor and I are working on trying to get this room, new furniture, and saving the mural and everything else. So that is in the works. So when that is finalized, we'll get it to you. But it's not something that's been dismissed. It's in the process. So as with that, um, if it's not ready yet, you can't ask for the money yet. So we will get that to you as soon as possible. I just wanted to put that out there, that's not been forgotten about. With that, uh, seeing no one further, Clerk McCullough.
On the motion?
Yes. You're voting for, um, the last one.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordan?
No.
Walden out of Les? McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
No.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
No.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Nine yeas, three nays.
Your vote, you approve that one. Twenty-three.
Yeah, suspend the rules, Mr. President, to take 23B with 23F.
Twenty-three B and 23F as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? B is the R1-180 Clerical Union Memorandum Agreement. 23F is $7,590 from Sanitarian 1, 2, Sanitarian 2, and Sanitarian 3 for the same amount of $7,590. Motion be receive, adopt, pass first reading. Counsel McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee had our Board of Health Director, Sean Gonzalez, before us. This is an agreement between NAG, that was NAG Local 180, R1-180 Clerical Union, and actually initiated by the city. The mayor and Sean both told us, Mayor Garcia was with us, that we've, and I think we know the, the history of what's happening in the building and health departments when it comes to our inspectors. We are, if, if we are lucky to hire someone, we often find out that we are the training grounds for people who get their initial start with us and then are grabbed up by other local communities with a higher proposal for, for a higher salary. But Sean has noted that there's been a problem with the, with these inspectors within the Board of Health. And this proposal here would change the grades of three different positions eventually. At the moment, very quickly, the transfer that would honor the proposal is from Sanitarian 1, $7,590, divided to Sanitarian 2, $5,060, and Sanitarian 3, $2,530. This would allow money in the budget to, to keep and to, to entice two of our younger inspectors. Not, I don't mean by age, but relatively new to the city. That they would, they would benefit from a salary increase. One in the budget is a, for Sanitarian 1. The reason there's a surplus is although there are two positions, only one has been occupied over this fiscal year. And Sanitary, Sanitarian 3, we would be looking at one of the inspectors would become, it's essentially, although it's part of the association, the collective bargaining unit, it would become the, the Assistant Board of Health Director on top of duties that are, that see this position out in the field as everybody in the Board of Health Department is required to do, to do field work. I, I think I got the highlights. I don't wanna go on and on, but I certainly answered questions. The committee believes that this, agrees with the mayor and the Board of Health Director that this makes sense in terms of salaries. The increases are a little bit more than what we would call cost of living, but they're actually adjustments to positions for the, for the purpose of keeping people that we need in terms of doing the work of the Board of Health.
Counsel Jordan.
Yeah, Mr. President, I am gonna vote for this. I, I listened very carefully to the committee meeting and I think the chairman summarized it well. I'll just add a few different additional points. You know, this is, this is a very expensive adjustment, no doubt. These are roughly 25% rate increases. But the department head and the mayor did a comparative analysis of these positions compared to other comparable communities. And, and therefore, these adjustments are warranted. You know, we have to pay competitive salaries. Again, where, and, you know, at the risk of bringing up debates of the past, this is why, you know, these type of adjustments need to be made and these costs borne by the city so that when we have other things that we can ill afford, you know, as I mentioned previously about the vacation leave increase that we didn't have to do and we can't afford for $65,000. When you have adjustments like this that you have to do, because quite frankly, if you're completely uncompetitive, you're gonna lose these key staff. You know, this is a, you know, it's a $36,000 hit to the budget. No, no way to sugarcoat that. But I, I, I feel compelled to support this because they did the work. And, and quite frankly, we required that they provide that analysis and they did do the homework. But it just goes to show you why we as a council have to prioritize our spending in this budget. Because these things are adding up, okay? And there is a finite amount of money that we have to work with. But undoubtedly, this adjustment does bear support. These are key staff. They have a certain skill set and training that is very desired by other communities and therefore, we have to, I recommend supporting it.
Counsel Tomlin.
Yeah, it was very important. And we did, as Counsel Jordan stated, we did ask for the comparative salaries in the communities. Agawam, I believe, Chickaby, Westfield, and they were substantially higher. And I've, I've talked to the department head and saying that when you, when you have people and you start losing people, now you gotta train them again. And that, and that's a cost. And, and having people familiar now with, with the area and the work they have to do, it really helps. But you have to pay the people to keep them here and it's important. And I know it's, it's a hit on the city budget, but to keep the workers here that are trained here and that know the city and that can get the job done, because it's definitely an apartment, department that is, is needs, needs the work, workers there to get the, the work done that the community needs.
Motion be to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion to pass the second reading. Clerk McCullough, if you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Walden out of Les?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve that one. 23C, request of $97,640.20 from Capital Stabilization to Personal Equipment. Motion is recommended that be adopted. Motion receive, adopt, pass first reading. Counsel McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we know, under Mayor Garcia, we established the Capital Stabilization Fund for the first time. And again, another proposal out of this stabilization fund with good merit to it. This particular one, we had the chief of police before us with, with Mayor Garcia. And it's proposal to replace our firearms for our police department. The city went out for requests for proposals. I forget exactly how many bids came back, but they narrowed it down to two bids. The bid that they want to accept is from Interstate Arms. Would reflect a $97,640.20 purchase of firearms. This would be 160 new firearms, about 160, about $600 per gun. But also there are personnel equipment that goes with it, which includes holsters alike and other items that reflect the need for a police officer to carry a firearm. This would replace a very aging fleet of firearms. Most firearms average a seven to 10-year life expectancy. Our firearms in the police department are hitting 12 years old. So not only for the existing officers who carry the firearm, but for our new officers, this would replace the firearms with a new Glock that would certainly complement the, the police department itself in terms of the type of work that they do. The, the bid is the lower bid of, of the two that they narrowed it down to. And the committee recommends that we adopt the use of capital stabilization funds for this purpose.
So motion would be to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion, motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is pass the second reading. Clerk McCullough, if you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Walden out of Les?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve 23C. 23D, Canadian Finance, a request of $100,000 from Cannabis Stabilization to Substance Abuse Programs. Motion to receive, adopt, pass the first reading. Counsel McGivern.
Mr. President, we had a, a good discussion with Aaron Vega from the OPEC Planning Department, Mayor Garcia, and the members of the Finance Committee itself, excuse me, about the use of cannabis stabilization. This topic has come up in the past when we've learned of legal challenges towards how this impact money is used. This money comes from the, the, the impact dollars that are paid by new companies that have come to the city of Hoyok, mostly manufacturers of cannabis itself. They are, most of it is one-time fees that are paid and can be used only for certain projects themselves. One of the ones that was identified and seemed to take a good, for good purposes, seemed to take a liking by the city council and others, is a substitute, use some of this dollars for substance abuse programs. Mr. Vega talked about a number of programs he's reached out to and we asked him to reach out to even, even more, which includes CHD, BHN, Miravista, and Gondira. All, all BHNs that provide, provide the behavioral health network services that are needed. Unfortunately, the reason that we, I think so many of us are in favor of this is recognizing the significantly substance abuse issue within the city of Hoyok. We, we know and we, we certainly want to, to enhance and to make sure that these service providers are addressing the substance abuse users. Many of them who are transient, you know, they have come to the Hoyok because we have too much of a high trafficking of drugs within the city, although we've made great strides in that area over the last decade. And some of them would just come in, become part of our city. Many homeless, many in, in different shelters and in different areas that are seeking help. And, and that's why I think this is, the committee thinks it's good use of these dollars and put, you know, this type of impact dollar towards good use in terms of substance abuse programs. We, we did agree on one thing, it is not the city. We are not the experts, nor should anyone in the city think they are experts when it comes to the services needed. And that, that should be left up to the programs. But to enhance the provision and to enhance their presence in Hoyok is the way these dollars will be used.
Counsel Rivera.
I have a question with regards to like the spend. So will it, so I know it's not up to us to come up with programming, but ideally, I would think that it would be for substance abuse on cannabis mostly, right? That's the first piece, because it's coming from cannabis, cannabis dollars, right? And then the second piece is, like, a lot of these programs are already within the city doing whatever they're doing. So, I mean, again, it's not up to us to decide, but like, just like people were putting restrictions on CPA, it's our money, right? And we get to choose how we spend our money. And for me, it's like, if we're gonna be funding one of these programs that already are doing the work, like what added value is the $100,000 that we're giving? What, what's gonna be the bang for our buck within the community of the city, right? Because they're, if they're already doing the work and will we just be subsidizing someone that they're already paying? Or will they add an extra person on top of what they're already doing? So that's kinda like the piece for me, like, it makes sense to, 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 I'm totally with the substance abuse piece, but like, is where the money is being spent and how it's being spent, right? Because if we're giving it to someone to subsidize a position that they already have out here, then that's different than saying that they're gonna add two extra positions to, to help combat whatever they're doing. So for me, those are the things that I, I mean, if we can somehow try to tease that out, then for me, that would be it. But other than that, I have no other questions.
Counsel Bartley.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I'm gonna vote no on this. I think it's a mistake to get into this part of the use of the cannabis stabilization funds. This is what leads to lawsuits. And, and we just heard my prior speaker relative to, well, are we funding positions? Are we funding programs? This is, th, this is a basis for a lawsuit. And this is a basis for other lawsuits from the cannabis, cannabis industry. I, I think it's in, I, I mean, listen, we, I don't wanna be pigeonholed if somebody doesn't respect the need because that, that quite often happens when you, when you make a comment such as I'm making now. That is not the case. It's the source of the funds. We're, in my opinion, I said it before, we're supposed to be stewards for the city. I think a vote like this, a vote for this, as noble as it is, I think it potentially exposes the city, even, even though assurances are made by, what I, from what I heard, we're non-lawyers. I've certainly seen lawsuits of, against using this as a, as a foundation for a lawsuit in other communities. So I, I think it's an error to, to do this now. And I think it's gonna lead to other votes, Mr., other, 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 other votes similar to this. Once the camel's nose is in a tent, it's gonna lead to more. So this will be noticed by the industry. I would just suggest strongly that we don't do this now, that we find if we have to, if we wanna fund this industry, that we do it through either, you know, CDBG funds would probably be the best way to go about it through the, through the non-public service. So I, I just think using cannabis stabilization is an error in this regard for those reasons. Thank you.
Counsel Jordan.
Mr. President, I just wanted to clarify. We're voting on 23D, correct? Discussing them?
D.
Yeah, okay, I thought so. First of all, I would like, my, my way in on this is I'm actually strongly in support of this. As we consider the source of these dollars, it's impact money. Impact. What is the impact of the marijuana industry on the community? We've listened to eloquent arguments in the past about, we need more sidewalks or we need this or that road improvement. These dollars go to education and substance abuse prevention. The obvious impact of the growth potentially of the recreational marijuana industry, right? Whether it's gambling and having an allocation for Gamblers Anonymous and people who, who don't successfully gamble, there are those who unfortunately will not be a responsible user of marijuana. And for those people, we should encourage substance abuse prevention and to be able to help them. It's an obvious use of the dollars. And for that matter also, it's also important to note that you're supposed to be 21 years old to be using recreational marijuana. And I think it's important that we have education in the schools, that tell children, think twice about getting involved in recreational marijuana, okay? That you're providing this type of education. So I really commend Aaron Vega and the mayor for coming forward so that for those people that are negatively impacted by the increase of this, that there are resources for you. And I'm not gonna nickel and dime and micromanage how they, as the people day to day that are running the city, are finding it best to allocate those resources. The fact that they're stepping up and recognizing that there are people that do fall between the cracks and need substance abuse support, I think is something this council should embrace. I think this is exactly what cannabis impact funds are. It isn't just about, you know, there's a crack in the sidewalk in front of the marijuana place, okay? There's also about the impact on lives for people who haven't done well with the expansion of. There's also about the impact on lives for people who haven't done well with the expansion of marijuana. And for those that do need a help, uh, I think these dollars are the humane and correct way to address those needs as well. And I think it's about taking a holistic approach, uh, to the expansion of marijuana. That there's plenty of people that enjoy it and have no negative repercussions, but there are some, uh, just like gambling. There's people that go down to the casino and, you know, have a great time. Uh, but there are others who lose everything. And there needs to be resources allocated for that. And, uh, this is exactly what I, I, I think we're embracing, a holistic im- uh, approach to what we're calling impact. So I, I really commend the mayor for coming forward with these funds.
Councilor Anderson Burgos?
Yes, based on, thank you, Mr. President. Based on, um, some of the comments that Councilor Bartley just made, um, I would like for, through the chair, to, uh, to the city solicitor, to speak on some of those concerns that Councilor Bartley has.
So motion would be to ask questions to the legal department?
Thank you, yes, please.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And legals there?
Yeah.
Muted. There, there she goes. Unmuted. Mike's here. Alright, so Mike is here, uh, if you have questions for Mike.
Yes, Mike, Attorney Bissonnet. Um, did you happen to hear Counselor Bartley's concerns in regards to, um, there might be some legal action that can be persuaded if we vote on this on twenty-three E? Which is basically the, um-
Twenty-three D.
Oh, it's D, I'm sorry. Twenty-three D?
The use of impact funds for, uh, cannabis stabilization funds for substance abuse program?
Right. Yeah, that's what the proposal is in front of us. Is there any legal ramification?
No, OPEC vetted that one, uh, through legal, uh, prior to submitting it to the council. Um, that is probably one of the more appropriate uses that would pass muster as there is a, a direct relationship. I think Councilor Bartley is correct that there's litigation over some rather extreme nexuses or connections between cannabis use or cannabis sales and the impact. So, uh, a lot of that is going to be corrected, uh, hopefully through a model, uh, post-community agreement developed by the Cannabis Control Commission. We're not there yet, uh, so we're negotiating with the industry in Hoyok as a whole. Um, and this is one of the agreed-upon recommendations. So, uh, I believe that's why OPEC said it formally, but, uh, it's my belief that this would, uh, probably be uh, one of the more, um, acceptable uses of impact funds for the industry. Um, at least we can make an argument that there's a direct correlation. So, uh, that's usually what they're looking for. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, I think, I mean, it makes sense. It's, it's, when I hear impact fee, what is exact, what, what exactly is this business impacting? And that would be an impact, in my opinion. But yeah, I'm not a lawyer, so I just wanted to bring some ease to maybe some of the counselors that might have had questions. Thank you.
Councilor Rivera was next.
I think, um, thank you, Mr. President. I think for me, I, and I agree with, uh, with Counselor Jordan with regards to substance abuse. But again, I, I will lead back to the fact that it, there, I mean, in my experience in working with adjudicated youth that are coming out of prison, right? Um, and when they were addicted to marijuana or had substance abuse issues with marijuana, there is no place nearby that you can go to that can help you with cannabis. So if we're giving substance abuse funding to someone that is running substance abuse programming, the program that they run are for heroin and for, um, pills or whatever it is. There is no programming right now as it is for cannabis in general. So that's where my question pertains, right? And then I think, and maybe this could go to legal, right? Cause and where Counselor Bartley has somewhat of a point with the lawsuits. If we're granting a hundred thousand dollars for substance abuse and they use it on heroin, what's to say that a marijuana company comes in and says, that's not how I wanted that to be used? It should have been for marijuana and cannabis, not for heroin, not for the, all these other things. Not saying that they're gonna do that, but it could lay the grounds for someone to come in and say, no, you didn't spend the money the way it should have used, cause the impact is on cannabis, not on heroin and not on anything else. So the idea should be that the money, when it gets, goes into these programs, that it's focused on educating the youth, on being twenty-one years old for, for cannabis, the impacts of cannabis, and trying to create some sort of programming to help, um, people that are addicted to cannabis to try to get off of it. Because that kinda doesn't exist at the moment, anywhere that I know of. But if that, that does exist, hopefully somebody can bring it forward to us and that would be great. If Mr. Bissonnet can actually answer that, because for me cannabis impact means it has to do with cannabis.
Hey, it's still, it's still under suspension, so he can answer a question.
I think we're waiting. I don't know if he-
Yeah, unmute. Attorney Bissonnet, you there?
It's cool. There he goes.
There it is. Can you hear us, Mike?
We gotta invest some technology.
I think we're freezing up a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
He froze up.
We got you now. Did you hear the question or no?
Was that any better?
Yeah, it's better. Did you, did you hear the question, though?
I did not.
So the question is, um, with regards to spending the substance abuse dollars, uh, the legality of it, would it be just focused only on cannabis impact? Or could we incorporate all other substance abuse issues too as well?
Well, my understanding from OPEC is that this is going to be a broader inquiry about what types of services may be available, rather than just contracting. Um, but I think it'll be a wide variety of substance abuse services. I would also point out, uh, and I hope to have a report, uh, for the council at your next meeting on the final, uh, settlements that are now coming in on the opioid, uh, national settlement. Lawsuits, uh, that are finalized to four, five of the cases. Uh, we should have some final numbers, but my expectation is that the city of Hoyok will have, up to two million dollars available. Uh, some of that will be paid out over a longer period, fifteen years. The Johnson and Johnson settlement, for example. Uh, but the latest settlements, uh, with pharmacies and some other providers, uh, will have another, uh, million or so for, uh, over a shorter period of time, six to seven years, under the terms of the latest settlement agreement. So, uh, there's some good news there, but there's also some other resources that the city's gonna have available to bring to bear on this crisis.
So, we could use the money for other substance abuse issues or is it just cannabis?
Yes, you could use it for other, uh, in the context of substance abuse, cannabis is certainly, uh, an eligible, uh,
Well, I, I guess-
Creator of abuse. So I think, uh, you know, it's going, it's, it's unlikely, uh, at this point that there's going to be, um, a large independent cannabis abuse program. It's more likely, and we're trying to find that out with this, um, sort of solicitation to see what's out there for programs
There isn't.
That, uh, citizens of Hoyok might be able to use and benefit from. So I think, um, your question, Counselor, is sort of what this is gonna help find out. You know, overall, what, what's available and what direction? This may provide some insight into what direction the opioid, uh, use of the settlement funds may, uh, may veer off into.
Thank you. So I guess for me, two, the, the difference, I mean, it is what it is. If, if we're gonna use substance abuse funds for all substance abuse issues, I'm with it too. I have no issues with it, preferably because I know that there isn't programming for cannabis. I think that it would be better that if our funding from cannabis impact would go towards cannabis, that would be great. But if not, then I'd, I'd still vote yes for it anyways. Just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Counselor McGivern?
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. President. I, I think I abbreviated the committee report because our discussion at the committee level, um, dealt with a lot of issues about how this money would be used, the importance of this money being used. And, and I kinda skipped over that because it was such a favorable response at the committee level. I didn't realize there were that many questions, but they're good questions. And I wanna try to highlight some of the, uh, things that I know, not just from the committee discussion, but from my, uh, my career in the, uh, in the Hoyok District Court itself. Substance abuse crisis was, is not, was not created by cannabis. It was not created by the cannabis industry coming into the city of Hoyok. And it certainly is, is not the crux of the problems when we, when we talk about substance abuse. However, it is part of the industry. Um, the number one worst drug out there is alcohol. The worst withdrawal from a drug is alcohol. And each of these providers know how to deal with that. Um, the heroin is, and, and the heroin enhanced by fentanyl is just one of the scariest drugs out there. And there's now a new drug that's even gone beyond fentanyl, which I don't wanna get into this evening, but it's just, it's starting to hit the eastern part of the state. And when it comes here, we need to be ready. Um, substance abuse is about addiction. Substance abuse is about people who have addictive natures. Substance abuse is also, and sometimes we don't know which comes first, about mental health. Mental health issues which lead to substance abuse, substance abuse which led to mental health issues. This is all part of, of what impact dollars can be used for. OPEC is hoping that the hundred dollars, hundred thousand dollars, excuse me, will put us at the table with these main providers and perhaps others, that we can have a, a say, um, as to using this industry dollars to help alleviate a lot of the issues that we know about. We, we talk about cannabis and, and, and most of us, when we talk about it in these, these chambers, is about legal cannabis, which is pretty much, uh, a drug, but pretty much a safe drug when used appropriately. Cannabis sold on the street is not the cannabis that, uh, you fifty-three-year-old people might have used back in the, uh, seventies and eighties. And I know in the sixties and seventies, if anybody talked about cannabis the way it is in the street now, jaws would be dropping off, off of them. Cannabis illegal is laced with everything from PCP, fentanyl, cocaine, and you name it, because the drug trafficking trade wants cannabis to become addictive, not because of the THC, but because of what they're fa- putting in those, that marijuana that they're selling, leading to other substance abuse issues that we all need to be aware of. So I think, I think it's been highlighted, but OPEC wants to bring the, uh, use this dollars, it's legal, use these dollars to bring the, the providers to the table with the city, talk about education at a younger level. And that, that goes back to, I, I think even Counselor Bartley remembers Little No-No. You know, we, we all know, Little No-No was, uh, I don't know if Counselor Rivera remembers Little No-No.
Yeah, I went to the air, Officer Day.
But Little No-No was a creative character of Ronnie, uh, LaMagdalene that he brought into a very young age into the public schools to talk about this. Um, I, I, I kidding, kiddingly said, my, my substance abuse, uh, education from my father and his infinite wisdom was a little sign he gave me that said peanut butter is better than pot. And, you know, I, I put that up on the, on the wall of my bedroom and I looked at that every day and thought about that, you know? And I think, you know, it's things like this that education is part of this. To get to young people, public schools is a great part of where, where education can take place. To just make them aware of what they're facing when they get out there on the street before it's, it's too late. And before they, they with, uh, peer pressure or whatever, you know, dabble into something that they shouldn't be dabbling into. So that, it's, it's impact dollars that, that can be used this way. It makes sense. I, I trust the, uh, it's not just OPEC, it's the, uh, citizens, uh, excuse me, the citizens, uh, Cannabis Citizens Review Committee that'll be working and then talking about these issues. And I think when, when you have roundtable discussions and you talk about especially education, uh, at a younger level, younger age, it's all very important to, uh, solving the problems and, and looking to, uh, better this community in terms of what these issues are.
Counselor Bacon?
I took my hand down. I'm all set. Thank you.
Counselor Maldonado Velez?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief. Um, I just, I'm thinking back to when we originally, uh, as our term, um, got cannabis stabilization monies in front of us to be transferred. And I think the conversation back then, um, you know, there were a lot of cities getting, um, sued over the use of cannabis impact money. And I think us as a council, we asked OPEC to come up with a cannabis citizen review committee. It includes members of the community, includes, um, people in the cannabis industry. So I had to say like they vetted it, um, and, you know, they, this is what they brought in front of us. Um, I still, you know, just because we did that process doesn't mean that there's not an opportunity for them to still sue us. So, you know, to Counselor Bartley's point, um, but I do think, you, you know, when I looked at this, I'm like, what kind of cannabis business would approve of this? When they're in the business of getting people to smoke more or eat more edibles or whatever it is, so why would do that? But then, you know, a lot of the conversations around substance abuse, and I think what, where we are finally as like, at least as this body, is that we're not going towards an abstinence sort of education. It's more of like really understanding what are the effects of marijuana and understanding how you can use it in your life, um, so it doesn't affect you negatively. So I will say, you know, I'm, 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 ba- based on like all of the, that's describing the last year with having this ca- um, cannabis committee, um, and having all these, um, input into how we spend the money, I think we should be good. So I'm all for this. And I do hope, um, you know, maybe to Counselor Rivera's point, maybe Hoyok will have the first Cannabis Anonymous or something. I don't know. We'll see. Um, but that, those are my points. Thank you.
Counselor Givner?
I'm all set, Mr. President.
Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, I, I just, I thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I think this has just been a very healthy debate. So credit to you, Mr. President, and this is very, I think it's a very positive debate. Clearly, I'm gonna be in the minority on this and that's, that's okay. Um, I'm just gonna make a couple of small points. I wanna thank Attorney Bissonnet for bringing up the J and J hearing because that's, that's some, somehow got lost in the ether somewhere, but that would be a wonderful resource for this sort of a, a program for substance abuse. I personally do not think, and based upon my review of other lawsuits and my review of other communities giving back funds, including Boston, that this is, when we say cannabis impact and substance abuse, I do not believe they are reasonably related. Uh, seeing how cannabis is a, a legal substance and substance abuse is something far beyond. I think we heard prior speakers say, uh, just how, uh, about lacing things and such like that, well beyond my comprehension. I just don't think it's reasonably related. Uh, I'm gonna make one other small point. Is this what we want OPEC to do? Is this what OPEC's about? Doing substance abuse? I, I, I'm just, it's not the Board of Health? So I, I'm, again, the, the camel's nose is gonna get under the tent and then we'll see where it leads from there. I, I'm sure I'm wrong, but that we probably won't get sued on this one, uh, one transfer. But I'm, I'm fearful this is gonna lead to other ones. And then other ones are gonna lead to other ones. And then next thing you know, you're gonna have, uh, cannabis providers saying, wait a second. And, uh, so the precedent's out there. We'll see what happens. Um, I, and I, and I think, again, I said this is a noble cause. Mike brought up the J and J funding and that's gonna be very significant over a period of decades. That was brought up to us last year under Mayor Murphy's, uh, uh, in fact, Mayor Murphy and I worked on some, this, to, to make sure it happened. And all credit to Mayor Murphy and of course Attorney General Healy at the time. So I, I just think it's a, I think it's a mistake now, um, and I think, um, I think we-
And I think um I think we should just let other resources handle this and preferably other departments handle this. But just my take. Thank you.
Counselor Malo Alves.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. I I think after this last counselor spoke, I I have a question because a lot of transfers usually have a transfer uh line number that gets transferred to and from. And I noticed like in this one in particular, just this two dots before the substance abuse program. So I guess my question is, um, does cannabis um stabilization money only can be used for OPEC? Or is it something that can be then, you know, take it out of stabilization to then be transferred into another department? I'm not sure we know this, for example, the Board of Health. So it only goes to OPEC.
Okay, OPEC, yeah.
And no, okay. So what is the, is there a special line item within OPEC that is getting transferred to? Like, is there a number?
No, I think what he's saying is, where is it going to? It's going to OPEC, but what line item? That I don't have, but I can get it for you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So seeing no one further, motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion to pass the second reading. Clerk Carl Ross, you vote yes. You're voting for the transfer.
Bartley. Givner. No. Givner. Jordane.
Yes.
Maldonado Valles.
Yes.
McGee.
Yes.
McGivern.
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti.
Yes.
Boello.
Yes.
Israel Rivera.
Yes.
Jenny Rivera.
Yes.
Tommen.
Yes.
Veken.
Yes.
Anderson Burgos.
Yes.
Unanimous vote. No, I'm sorry. Um, eleven yeas, one nay.
Your vote, you approve that one. Twenty-three E. Uh, seven thousand from Motor Equipment Repairs to overtime. Recommend it be adopted. Motion to be received, adopt, pass first reading. Counselor McGinn.
Mr. President, uh, first, before I give the committee report, I just want to commend Counselor Maldonado Valles because that was a pretty good catch there about that line item. We will get an answer to that because got me thinking right now. And and this one, we met twice on this in committee, making it a short story, I hope, is enough. Years ago, under uh Mayor Sullivan, the city created a motor pool uh department which brought mechanics from police, fire, and DPW into one pool with the thought that that would not only save money, but would combine resources. And and it does in many ways in terms of supplies and other things. But the specialty needs of the fire department, the police department do separate mechanics a little bit. And we found out that we seem to have mechanics assigned to police cars, which have a lot more than just the engine going in terms of their accessories, fire apparatus, which can be very specialty uh in terms of uh repair, in terms of maintenance itself. So the issue here was, we got a request to transfer seven thousand dollars. We learned the surplus in automotive equipment repairment. This is in the DPW budget itself, uh, was because of a vacancy through the court during the course of the year. And the overtime was specifically for the police mechanic. We had, the first time we talked it up, we had Carl Rossi, his first visit to the finance committee before us. And we asked him some questions about uh who's monitoring the overtime. And he said, well, that would be the chief of police. And the chief of police said, well, it's not in my budget. I'm not really monitoring it. And the committee said, okay, motion to table. And we did. And we let the two department heads kind of uh have a little roundtable discussion to come back to us with a little different answer. We got that answer at the last committee meeting. Chief Pratt said that him and Mr. Rossi have sat down, superintendent. They understand the uh, even though it's a police mechanic, it is part of the mechanic pool. But, you know, Chief Pratt also understands that he has to be part of, you know, overseeing in terms of overtime dollars, especially how that mechanic is used. So the committee feels that the dollars are well spent, that we do have two department heads now looking at the future of monitoring the overtime and making sure it's legit. And uh we feel comfortable in recommending this transfer tonight.
Anyone further? Motion is passed first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion to pass the second reading. Clerk Carl Ross, you vote yes. You're voting for twenty-three E.
Bartley.
Yes.
Givner.
Yes.
Jordane.
Yes.
Maldonado Valles.
Yes.
McGee.
Yes.
McGivern.
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti.
Yes.
Boello.
Yes.
Israel Rivera.
Yes.
Jenny Rivera.
Yes.
Tommen.
Yes.
Veken.
Yes.
Anderson Burgos.
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve that one. Just to follow up, um, Tanya said that once the money is approved, she will be setting up a line item for the cannabis committee. So the line item is now going to come into existence because you approved it. Does that make sense to you?
Yeah.
See how we got the answer, though? That's that was right here, right here. Quick response.
Still a good catch. Really good catch.
All right. So public safety, none. Public service, none. Off to DG and R. You want to take up A, B, C as a package?
Yes.
Motion to suspend rules, take up A, B, C as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? A is DG and R, whom was referred, uh, in order that our state delegation and mayor be invited in before the finance committee have a dialogue on how we can improve local aid funding formulas for a state uh plan of action that's complied with. B is DG and R, uh, city council inviting a state delegation to provide the council with a legislative update for the year ahead, complied with. And C is DG and R invite the state delegation to request, please draft a support legislation that would amend the needle uh program in the city. And that was complied with as well. Under discussion, Counselor Murphy Rumbaletti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, we had a a great meeting last week. Seems like a really long time ago. And uh we were joined by our state delegation. All of these orders are related to the state delegation, so it was good to bring them in as we usually do. They provided us with an update on um their priorities and what they're working on. You know, in the coming year, they talked about the different types of committees that they're on, which I think well represents Hoyoke. They're on the Ways and Means Committee, the Healthcare Financing Committee, Higher Education, Veterans Committee, Agriculture Committee, and uh the Mental Health and Substance Use um Committees. So just all around great advocacy. We talked about, um, they talked about, you know, just being aware of the cost of living that's continuing to go up. They're focusing on workforce development. There is a a shortage in all industries, as we're all very familiar with. They did discuss uh our local aid um with us and um explained that um for Chapter Seventy funds, there's ninety-seven million, which is actually an increase of seven million. Um, and then unrestricted funds um is twelve million, which is a two-hundred-thousand-dollar increase. They did talk about how they believe that economically challenged cities should pay less in taxes um and that local aid formulas are flawed. It there was a meeting with uh Counselor Jordane, who filed one of these orders, the mayor and the state delegation, and it sounds like it was productive about local aid, but there's still a lot more work um to do. And then um the the third item, um, we uh were joined by representatives from Tapestry, um, since this order was about them. July of twenty-twenty-two marks the um ten-year anniversary. So it was also an opportune time um for us to learn about uh the impact that the Needle Exchange Program has had over the last ten years. Um, at the time, it was only the fifth in the state, and now um there are many all over the state. And um now there's recently, they're in Chicopee, Westfield, Springfield as well. And they 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 did forward us um some data that was asked, um, you know, just about the the types of resources that folks are connected with. And if anyone's interested, uh, you know, they do, they did emphasize um that they do focus on taking in more needles than they give out. Um, and they gave us some suggestions. There is a hotline to report needles. Actually, I'm gonna say it into the record. It's four-one-three-six-five-zero-two-six-seven-nine. Anyone from the public can call and report the exact location of where a needle is found. They are also um regularly doing uh cleanups, um, open to anyone on the second Saturday of every month. And we had a a good discussion um that I thought was productive and and informative. So um I'll let others share whatever I missed. Thank you so much.
Anyone further? Counselor Paul.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I I thought that was a good report. I I don't have too much to add. I I just want to say for the record that, uh, just to point out, it's not currently a needle exchange program. It's a, you you can go in and you request a needle and you get it. The order was to request the state delegation to please convert it into an actual needle exchange program. But I I thought it was a good discussion. Uh, obviously, I was a little disappointed by by the response. Good discussion nonetheless. And I was wondering if maybe we could get a forward of some of the information that they sent out. I don't think I saw that either.
Yeah, I believe it, was it just to the committee or did you get it too? I'll forward it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, we get it. We'll send it out. Next was Counselor Jordane.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, it was a really good meeting. And uh for my piece of it, which was relative to the uh trying to get added local aid here to the city of Hoyoke, I I again want to thank the mayor, Senator Vellis, Representative Duffy for a really thoughtful uh productive conversation that we had together recently to really walk through uh what's going on with local aid uh for us. Now, uh, finally, um, I'm very appreciative of the fact that the state has increased the school department budget uh as a gateway city and has begin to have some recognition uh that we were radically underfunded for our schools. Uh, unfortunately, we're still in this cookie cutter approach uh to general um unsecured local aid. And uh we're hopeful that they will begin to be able to advocate for this city who is uh really underfunded uh for the type of needs that this community has. We have massive capital needs. Uh, we have a, we're eighty percent depreciated in terms of our capital plant. We have serious um unfunded liabilities to this community uh that need to be addressed. And um under the basic paradigm that we find ourselves in today, we will not be able to meet these needs independent uh of the state. And so the state needs to recognize that the needs of Hoyoke are different than a Wilberham and East Lai Meadow and Westfield and some of these other communities. We have our own unique set of budgetary demands based upon uh the people that we're trying to serve here in this community. And these formulas do not currently recognize that. Uh, I think we can strongly uh make the case for at least four million dollars a year in additional resources. I point this out uh when you compare us to the average communities in Massachusetts. And so uh I think it was a very receptive uh audience, uh, and I look forward to their advocacy. If we have any hope of really changing the game for Hoyoke going forward, uh, it's really gonna be uh based upon their voices in Boston advocating for us to get these resources. And it isn't just about another community asking for more money. This is about a community that has tremendous needs demonstrated, documented, that really needs to be dealt with if we're going to be uh able to be presented and poised for the future success of this community. Boston, who's sitting on billions and billions in reserves, has a community like us who really are struggling uh to to keep body and soul together down here. And we're the people that are responding to the greatest needs in this Commonwealth. So uh I really look forward, uh, that conversation we had at committee was a great continuation of an earlier conversation. And uh we, I really look forward, this has got to be a paramount issue for the city uh going forward to change the game and to change the future direction of this community financially from one of poverty to prosperity. And that's where we can go as a community if the right people, our number one customer who provides us currently the most aid overall, uh, recognizes this current fu- funding formula of of general government local aid is way, way below where it should be. And these are old antiquated formulas. So uh and it certainly will not come on the back of the people of Hoyoke who are paying more than their fair share, uh, who have currently the highest residential tax burden in Massachusetts. So uh really appreciated the meeting. Thank the committee for having that and look forward to the continued conversation going forward.
Counselor McGinn.
Just uh two cents. I I think it was a great meeting also. It's always good to see uh Senator Vellis and Rep Duffy. Uh, they're they're two individuals that work very hard for uh, especially for this community, but for all the communities that they, in terms of the senator that that he has to represent. Um, the these, the topics were were numerous at the meeting. I was a little bit late because we had the annual meeting of the merry-go-round. We still had a quorum. Had the annual meeting of the uh of the merry-go-round.
Yes.
I I better shut up, you know, I may, so far. And uh but I got there in time to to uh to listen to the topics. And I think Counselor Jordane and Counselor Paul just touched base on two of the topics. There were, there were numerous ones. And I and I said, I I mean, years ago when we fought Tapestry, it wasn't to me, it wasn't as much about what they do, their public health, what they do, they do very well. The problem was is when the when the state took it, the the uh legislation or the the governing away from the the local body, uh, you know, local legislative body itself and gave it to the Board of Health, it was correct in recognizing it as a a health and public safety issue. But it took away the ability for this body to talk about the socioeconomic issues of having one needle exchange program in western Massachusetts at the time, which was looking and and bringing people into the community instead of just addressing the needs of the community itself. It's it's the Needle Exchange now is is evident in Springfield, Chicopee, Westfield. I'm not even sure, but I think South Hallie has a a small uh component itself. But it's it's important to understand that public safety, public health is part of it. And I think what they do, they do well. Um, and I think the uh the advent of uh it being more widespread makes a lot more sense on the socioeconomic um issues. What I said to our state delegation as far as that goes is, let's not forget where we like to see dollars and where we like to see help is combating the trafficking and drug trade itself. And and that's what brings this city down. We've come a long way in uh pushing some of the gangs out that sell the illegal drugs on our streets, but there's still too much being sold and too many unwittingly uh young people looking to put a hundred-dollar bill in their pocket, being sucked into going out in the street and selling illegal drugs. And that's that's the area that, you know, the they both, Rep Duffy agreed and Senator Vellis, that they will continue to uh support dollars coming towards the city. I can't agree more with Counselor Jordane. Revenue sharing is is what I call it, needs to be far more fairer in terms of what comes back to this city. It wasn't that long ago when revenue sharing didn't just go into our schools. It helped pay for our police, our fire, and our DPW in a format that was based on the income you know, the income ratio of of the uh of cities itself. And that we've lost. We've lost the federal dollars and block grants in the the dollars that they used to come in. And and these are all revenue, this is all revenue that we need to enhance the quality of life in Hoyoke. Great job by the committee. Great job listening to uh Senator Vellis and Rep Duffy. They are tremendous uh voices for the city of Hoyoke.
Counselor Veken.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to circle back to the Needle Access Program for a moment. And I do thank them for the summary that was pretty much a CDC summary that was sent out. And I do understand the public health aspect relative to the spread of communicable disease and the reuse of contaminated needles. But what I was hoping to get from the program, I was kind of surprised to see Tapestry at the meeting, but since they were there, I was looking for reports from them relative to their local program here in Hoyoke. How many people are being served? How many people they're hooking into treatment programs to help people get off of the drugs? Because at this point, we have more people dying from the drug overdoses than the communicable diseases that way back at the beginning of the project were largely the driving concern. So as this um So as this, um, program and problem have morphed into people really dying from overdoses of drugs at a fast or at a more, ha- at a higher rate than dying of the communicable diseases, I was hoping to get some insight and some statistics from them in terms of their collaborations and coordinations with treatment programs actually helping people to get off of the drugs and deal with their addiction. So I'm hoping that that information will be forthcoming, and I was very happy to have the discussion go in the direction of trying to really do a lot more with addressing the dealing and the deaths from the drugs. Thank you.
Counselor Malo Velez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, and thank you, Madam Chair, for that great, um, synopsis of what happened at the meeting. Um, and also, I guess, following, as Counselor Bacon was speaking, it just reminded me of something very, very small that was said during that meeting, which was bills that are in the House trying to get, um, safe injection sites. I think one of the things living downtown, you know, there are needles in the ground, but I also see people shooting up right in the streets, like, with no shame. So I'm hopeful that, as a city, you know, when these bills do pass the State House, that we're one of the first cities that gets safe injection sites, so that we can deal with those people that are doing the drugs, so that we can get them the medical attention and the help that they need. So yeah, I just wanted to put that in there because that was briefly mentioned during the meeting. Thank you.
Seeing no one further. Motion that these are complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? There's no charter and rules, no joint committee. Off to motions, orders, and resolutions. Twenty-nine from Counselor Bartley, DPW engineer, providing opinion as whether the do not block, do not block the box being installed at North Hampton Street and Longwood. Um...
I think it goes to ordinance.
Yep, so, receive, send to ordinance, copy to engineer.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then thirty through thirty-six, I think we're gonna send to, uh, Public Works Department. Receive, uh, receive, adopt, and refer to Public Works.
Alright, so thirty-one to thirty-six, take up as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
As well as thirty-one is DPW review whether North Hampton Street between West Glen and Gilman Street should be resurfaced. Respond back in 30 days. Thirty-two, uh, re-stripe the do not block the box areas on North Hampton Street ASAP, 30 days. Thirty-three, re-stripe the mid, uh, block pedestrian crossway at Hillside Avenue, Coit ASAP. Thirty-four, DPW install appropriate signage on Main Street and, uh, Right Side Drive to prevent ongoing illegal U-turns. Thirty-five, uh, install or work with Mass DOP to install better signage to direct northbound motorists on US 5. And thirty-six, uh, DPW saw no truck signage on Michigan Ave. At least a third request, so all these to receive and send to DPW. Receive, adopt, and send to DPW? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-seven from Counselor Givner, that, uh, a four-way stop be created Oak and Essex. Motion to ordinance?
Can I sign on to that?
Yep. Sign on Counselor Malo Velez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, thirty-eight, um, from Counselor Givner, that the right turn lane be designated on Hampden at the corner of Pleasant Street in an effort to enhance traffic flow to ordinance?
Quick discussion?
Yep.
It's Brian. It's, it's an old one.
Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, just, we're, is this, uh, is this by the, the former People's Bank?
Yeah.
That was this? And it's, it's to make a right-hand turn onto Pl- onto, uh, onto Hampden?
Onto Pleasant.
Onto...
Coming up Hampden.
Coming up Hamp- thank you. Thanks for the clarification. I was...
And then make a left-hand turn into White Hut.
Coming soon, Joe, right?
This lane's gonna be very well used soon.
Okay, great. Alright, that, that helps me. Thank you.
Alright, so two ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-nine from Counselor Jordain and Counselor Bacon, or that the John McKenzie Monument at McKenzie Stadium be, uh, relocated by the park, the park. Uh, so relocating this one, so...
Add my name to that. I, I thought this was done, Mr. President.
It wa- it was. I, I can, can I say?
Yeah.
Counselor Tom.
I was told it was done, so...
Yeah, it, yeah, it is done. It, uh, I talked to, uh, John Tuig. It was done, as you stated, uh, Counselor Bartley, about three or four years ago. It's down there, um, but, uh, Coach McCarthy wanted to see if, he talked to, uh, Tom Nard, see if they could get that plaque cleaned up so he could read it better. But it is there down, as you're entering, entering off of the, you know, the, the driveway into the park with the, with the, with the, you know, the, the high school plays and where the mil- uh, the, the baseball team we played. So it is done.
Yeah. Well, the last part of the order is if money is required to restore or re-beauty of...
Restore it, yeah.
CPA.
Do it.
Oh, that's exactly what I was gonna say, Joe.
Be CPA.
CPA, yeah. There you go.
Counselor Jordain, I heard. Counselor Jordain?
Yes, I would like to have this received, adopt, referred it over to the park at Bracken, DPW. Yeah, that, that would be another list, uh, to add to the, uh, wonderful list of public projects, um, that we could do for, uh, Mr. McKenzie. I'm sure he would, uh, he would greatly appreciate it, and I certainly would on behalf of his legacy. So, uh, they, that is correct. It was moved, uh, but there was also a question of, could it even be moved or put on something? It isn't just restoration, but it, there's also a question of, let's really think about this a- as far as the prominence of his monument. That whole park is named for him. Well deserved, by the way, uh, when, uh, you know, this, this fine gentleman was, uh, was wrestling with, uh, a mine, uh, basically a depth charge to save his ship in World War I. So I would like to, uh, see, and I know Tom is looking at it, about seeing if they could maybe come up with something, if it's, even if it's not on that stone anymore, uh, to do something even more prominent, uh, for him. And really, obviously, I think we need to restore that, uh, plaque at a minimum, if not more, uh, for him, so we can get the word out about who John McKenzie was and what he did, and, uh, as a Congressional Medal of Honor winner, uh, of, of amazing prominence for the city of Hoyoak. So, uh, just look forward to having this receive, adopt, and refer it over to them, and I, I know they're working on it.
Alright, so Counselor Bartley.
Could I offer a, a very, very friendly, um, two amendments, if I could, uh, based upon what the prior speaker just said. One is we can refer the, all these go to the mayor, we know this, but maybe we can add this, add it to the CPA list. That'd be one. And second off, I think we should probably hear from the Parks Commission on this. So I'd like to refer to the Parks Commission to perhaps cir- then they can perhaps circle back to us with, uh, with a, with a recommendation.
I'll, I'll second that.
How about, motion, receive, adopt, send to the Parks Commission, DPW, and mayor with regards to funding and stuff. So that way, it's in the process, and they can all report back to us.
Right.
That sounds good.
Counselor Tom has hit up, hold on.
Yeah, if, if you could put me on that order too. I, I just, I stated, um, I talked to the Coach McCarthy. Actually, when I was in the guards over in Westfield, um, there was a gentleman, his name was McKenzie, and I says, "You related anything to the guy at, at the field?" And he says, "Yeah, that was my great-grandfather." And at that time, I don't know if he's still over there, but, um, I, I've been all 10 years, but I was gonna try to get, because I have a night, I guess, dedicated to, to McKenzie, um, John McKenzie, to see if I could get the great-grandson to throw out one of the first pitches. So I, I'm still in the process of trying to do that. I don't know if he's still in the guards, if he's still in the area, but he, uh, he did live, I think, at the time in North Hampton, so, uh, that's something I think would be very special for, for a night of baseball.
Alright, so on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
President can make a motion to suspend rules to take forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, then forty-six as a package, refer to finance.
Motion to take those up as a package, suspend rules, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, forty, or that the Public Works DPW City Engineer order come before the Council Finance regarding, uh, sewer breaks and sewer enterprise account. Forty-one, 125,000 from sick buyback to patrolmen. Forty-two, 125,000 from E91 dispatch to overtime. Forty-three, 33,000 from East Principal Clerks to, um, various ones. Forty-four is 61,345 dollars from vacation buyback to overtime, hazmat overtime. And forty-six is 28,500, um, fiscal year '23, uh, uh, development grant. So with those, all those to finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Forty-five, motion to be receive, adopt, pass the first reading.
So moved.
Uh, this is 17,328 dollars and 10 cents from sergeant patrolman to injured on duty. Counselor McGivern.
Just the, uh, accounting move to put the, uh, anyone who, uh, police sergeant or patrol officer who was injured on duty to, to, uh, still get their salary, but to take it out of the line item salary into the, uh, injured on duty, so we can account for the, uh, their service as offline.
Alright, so motion is passed first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Oh, sorry, Counselor Bacon? Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just wondering if we've ever gotten an update on that sergeant that's been out so long? If the chair knows.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, no, the chair doesn't know. We've had general discussions. It's difficult to, uh, discuss anything, uh, specific to personnel issues, but we've had general discussions with both, uh, chiefs of the, uh, police and fire departments, and we have promises that a more general report is coming our way. I will look into that. Long-term injured on duty, the last I heard, there was three in the police department, and I think the one in the fire department has, uh, been resolved.
Thank you.
Alright, so pass first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
To pass the second reading. Counselor Powell, yes, you're voting for the transfer.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordain?
Yes.
Malo Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Ramboletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Benny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
In unanimous vote.
Your vote, your approval of that. Forty-seven, Counselor Puelo, section eighty-six dash three twenty-one, uh, parking removed from both, uh, these entries, reviewed with the city engineer.
Ordinance, please.
So this is two ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Forty-eight, uh, from Counselor Rivera, Counselor, uh, Givner, Counselor Malo Velez, Counselor Murphy Ramboletti, Counselor Rivera, order that Chapter 50, Article 2, Hoyoak City Orange is be amended, uh, for establishing a police commission. Two ordinance?
Wait, 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 wait. Can we do public safety, copy to ordinance, to have discussion in public safety, and then ordinance make the decision?
You can do it that way if you want.
Alright, let's do it that way.
So you can say, "To public safety, then copy to ordinance," because it's gonna go there.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Forty-nine, um, Counselor Rivera, Givner, Malo Velez, Murphy Ramboletti, Rivera, order that Section 34, the charter be amended to establish police commission. Public safety, then to charter and rules? Same thing?
Yes, same thing.
All those in favor? All opposed? Fifty, from Counselor Rivera, that the city engineer add the street sidewalk, uh, the, the street sidewalks, the list of sidewalks that need to be repaved. So that would be receive, refer to the engineer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Fifty-one, from Counselor Bacon, that the crosswalk on County Road near Number 90, uh, Homestead Ave, McMahon be painted. Motion to be receive, adopt, send to DPW?
Yes, and, Mr. President, I just want to note, I know in public speak, somebody's, uh, also brought up that issue, and that my order does request that all the lines throughout the city be painted also. And I know that our new director of Public Works is getting his arms around right now the potholes, and that he will be paying attention to the line issues, but I just wanted to make sure these are on the radar, because, uh, to the point of the public speaker, some of these have gone without painting for about three years now. Thank you.
Counselor Givner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to address, um, the counselor's question. I did, um, get in touch with DPW, and it was mentioned that, um, their budget for painting had been depleted, so I think that's something we should think about, um, during budget approval, that they need enough money to paint the streets. Um, and also, I believe it was our city engineer who mentioned in one of our, um, one of our meetings at public safety, that they generally would be painting all of the, repainting all the lines annually, but it's always a financial issue.
Alright, so motion to receive, adopt, send to DPW. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
There's nothing else left, so motion is to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Have a good night. Night, everybody.